I'll open up the meeting just by simply identifying that this is a public town, a public hearing for the sole purpose of discussion and information and maybe a little conversation about the Neighborhood Assistance Act applications by both the Deep River Housing Authority and the First Congregational Church of Deep River. As I know Dwayne and Jim and Allison are aware, we've, this is nothing new, we've done this every year for quite a few years now. Although Allison, I think the church, this is the third, third year for you guys, third or fourth?
This is the fifth.
The fifth, oh, that's, that's, good job.
Thank you.
So, what we'll do is, I'll let Alan in, we'll see a little bit earlier, but let him in. What we'll do is, well, I'll ask you, I'll invite Allison to describe her project, and then if Joanne doesn't show up, I'll describe their project, and we can have any questions or concerns or anything like that. Allison, go on.
Okay. These are energy conservation and efficiency projects, and that's especially important for a building like ours, because the First Congregational Church of Deep River, we're a nonprofit entity, but our building is actively used nearly six days a week, year round. So we kind of double as a community center for the town, and we're also a soup kitchen for residents of Deep River and surrounding towns. So to continue serving all of the groups that use us, which includes groups like Alcoholics Anonymous, Narcotics Anonymous, we have Guiding Eyes for the Blind Puppy Training, Transitions Academy, National Theater of the Death, the Horseshoe League, Eating Disorders, Hearing Voices Network, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts. So we're serving, you know, literally thousands of people year round, and we need to make the building as energy efficient as possible to reduce our costs. And the Board of Trustees has identified maintenance issues and upgrades ranging from, this one is installing sustainable, energy-efficient wall, floor, ceiling material in identified areas throughout the building, making bathroom renovations using low-flow fixtures for environmental conservation. That's something we've had in the grant before, but we haven't always gotten full funding, so that's carrying forward. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that. And also installing energy-efficient lighting throughout the building and the parking area. So all of those measures will help us, you know, be more energy efficient and save in the long run. The total cost, we've estimated it 30,500. Whatever we don't get funded this year, you know, hopefully then we'll just carry it forward into Phase Two next year.
Good. Any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's really terrific how much, how much activity there is down in that, in that space, and how you guys provide that space for some really necessary functions, but also for some fun functions. I didn't realize that Theater of the Death was over there.
They've used our space, yeah.
Dwayne, Jim, do you have any questions, any thoughts?
I think it's a good, good program, and anything they're doing for energy efficiency is always a good, good thing to be working on, especially with the waters and the toilets there, the, you know, less, you know, water they're taking and using is good. So I support it, you know, 100%, as in the past few years.
Great, thank you.
I'd echo the same comments. I mean, it's, it's not like Deep River has a community center where, where these things can be done, and the, and the church can be the church. It's, it's, it's multi-purpose over there, and, and it's, it's an asset to the community. So I have no, I have no, no problem with it at all.
Thank you.
Great, great, thanks. I don't see that Joanne is able to make it tonight. She was going to try, but she's had some personal issues going on. Let me, she did send me over a description of what her application's for, so I'll read it for you. "The Housing Authority would like to apply once again to Neighborhood Assistance Act for the completion of the elevator renovation. We've applied the last several year, several years for funds to modernize our Schindler elevator, and although awarded the tax credits, we were unable to place all of them. Therefore, we were only able to receive a portion of the funding needed. We've secured an additional 25,000 in funding from CHFA's Housing Authority Small Improvement Program for the project as well. Project was supposed to start in 2020, but shortly after we started working with the consultants, the COVID crisis began bringing our project to a halt. We knew we would need additional funds to complete the entire project, however, the elevator had been having more and more issues. We were going to move forward and fund any shortfall with our reserves, but we, and we will be, but we are applying for $50,000 from NAA. If we receive and can place these credits, we will be able to complete the project without having to use any reserves. I would greatly appreciate the town's consideration in applying for this funding to complete this much-needed modernization." I know that this, this elevator was intended to be modernized when they did the new addition to the building, but if you remember, the funding ran a little bit short on that project, and elevator modernization was sacrificed. So it certainly is a project that's necessary to get the building up to where it should be, so I'm in favor. I don't know if anybody else has any other thoughts on it.
The only question I have, Angus, is there a price tag on the amount of money that these people can get for their grants? You know, if Allison's project came in at 75,000, could they get a 75,000 grant, or is there a cap?
I'm gonna let Allison answer that. I don't know if there is.
Yes, there is. There's a $150,000 cap per year, and there's also a $150,000 cap for what companies can provide. It's rare to get that much, so many, many of us, the nonprofits who go for this, are kind of in a Phase One, Phase Two approach to the whole project, but it is.
I just didn't know if it was a big, a big-ticket item that you needed if you could get a 75,000 grant this year or whatever, that, I'm just, no.
They could. If they're fortunate, they could, yeah.
I think from, from what I understand, it's quite the chore to try and find the companies to share the, the credits with you.
That's when the real hard work starts, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I think Eversource has been pretty generous.
They have.
But I'm not sure of any of those.
Yep, yep, there have been several, so, yeah.
Well, I, I'm fine with, with that information, and that's really all this was for, is for a public hearing. We're not gonna take any votes, we're just an information on it, and we'll take this to the, to the Board of Selectmen's meeting immediately following this, and, and we'll talk a little bit about the process there, and, and refer again to the executive orders that require this to be, to be done by that Board of Selectmen and not by the, not by, not at a regular town meeting vote. But unless anyone has anything else, I think we can close the public hearing and kill about a minute and a half, and then we'll open up the, the Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Angus, could I, Ian Comer, can I ask a quick question on the Kirtland Commons end of it? Is there anybody there to discuss that a little bit, or is that bolted in with the 30,000 for the Congregational Church?
No, that's a different application. There are two applications. One is from the Congregational Church, and that was for, that was for the 30,500 that Allison described, and the Housing Authority is asking for an application for up to, for 50,000 for theirs, for Kirtland Commons.
Is there any description on file anywhere, or what that would be for, for them, or?
Well, that's what I, that's what I just, that's what I just read, Jan, that's, that's for, to update.
I didn't read, yeah.
That's to update the existing, the elevator that was there originally.
I'm shocked. Okay, gotcha. Why I was thinking that was for the Town Hall, yeah, got it, got it.
Nope, nope, although, you know, at some point, we're gonna have to think about that for the Town Hall and the library too, but right now, they're still working.
I'm trying to think, you know, why I would think it was for the Town Hall when you're talking about Kirtland Commons, but I don't always hear. Okay, thank you.
No problem, no sweat, thanks. If that's the case, if everybody else is okay, let's entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing, move to a, to the, to our Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Make a motion, I'm gonna adjourn the public, public hearing.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now, wait a minute, and open up the, the Board of Selectmen's meeting. I haven't seen no one else has arrived, so I don't think we're gonna have to waive it, certainly giving everybody the opportunity to be here. Open up our Board of Selectmen's meeting at 6:30 on the dots.
Right on time.
Yep, it's a rare occasion these days. But the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on June 9th, 2020. Any comments, any thoughts?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held on June 9th, 2020.
My second.
If there's not any conversation, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, next on the agenda is consideration, considerization of proposals for Connecticut, or for the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act tax credit program for the Deep River Congregational Church and Kirtland Commons. As I explained earlier, just, we've already had this at the Selectmen, Selectmen's meeting two weeks ago, we discussed this, and we moved it to a town meeting. Because of the time constraints on this, this project and these applications, we, I talked with the state of Connecticut, and they said, no, we are still under the executive orders that don't allow for in-person public meetings to take place, town meetings to take place, and we can't have a vote at a remote town meeting, so they said the Board of Selectmen are authorized to, to, to approve these applications if we are so inclined. So what we did, that the public hearing that we just held was really just in an effort to make sure that any public that wanted to talk about it was aware of it and be here about it, were invited, and they, and that, that's why we had that. So that will go along with our application to show, because things are so out of joint, out of, out of sync, really, I guess, we'll just document that we've done this as prescribed by the state, as opposed to just, just doing it, and, you know, just doing it on our own. So that's why we did that. I, there's no one new here, this is all part of the same broadcast, so I think we're, I think we're fine, unless you guys wanna talk about this a little more, I think we're fine just to take a motion and a vote to approve.
I just have, I just have one quick question, Angus.
Yep.
And, and I've been part of this now for four, four years. Why do we have to go through all this, and it has no really bearing on our residents and the town? You know, I understand, I mean, it's, it's helping, it's helping our community, but it's no direct impact to our, our taxpayers. That's my only question.
It's a good question, and I don't have an official answer to that question. It is, the Connecticut legislatures, when they adopted this Neighborhood Assistance Act rules, require that these applications go through their communities. So I guess it's kind of a vetting process, if you will. If the community, if the Board of Selectmen and the community just determines that that is worthwhile endeavor for, for these funds, then, then it has to go through that before the application gets to the state. That's the only thing that I can think of. There's, there's really no, there's very little work for us to do. We don't have to do any paperwork, other than just file the process and file, file this with the state, and then all of the, all of the effort is on, on the applicants. So that, that's, that's what I think the issue is.
No, just, I was just curious, that's all.
It's a good question. I remember the first time that Dick introduced it at a meeting I was at. I, it's just, it's weird, but okay, it sounds like a good project, let's go.
Yeah, that's, that's the only comment I was gonna have too, is just, you know, for our, the three of us, reiteration, and anybody that might see this later, as to why is the town involved with this? And we, you know, we've had this discussion, but it's, it's nice to hear again that it, it's just part of the process, and it, and it doesn't have any direct impact on taxpayers and whatnot, but it's the way it was set up, so it's good to know.
No, I really do think that it's just, so the applications are not going willy-nilly to the state, where it could get lost for, for weeks and months before it goes through this.
Good.
And it sounds, it sounds like the organizations have to, then they have to, the church and the Kirtland Commons has to go out, and they have to do a lot of work.
Oh, yeah, they do a lot of work. I remember.
They check, and they, they have to do the work.
I remember two or three or four years ago, Joanne was really struggling to find corporations that were big enough to actually take advantage of these credits, and we, I tried to help her a little bit, find some, find some organizations that are relatively local.
She reached out to me when I was at Whelan back a few years ago, and I don't know if Whelan ever did it or not.
I think, I think, I think we even went so far as to find the towns where a lot of these residents are from, and reach out to their communities, and say, you know, who, if there's an organization there that might have. It's quite a bit to generate that much, you know, 100, 100, even 50,000 for the tax credit, you've gotta, gotta spend quite a bit of money, so. Anyway, they're both, you know, they both have been back here for five years now anyway, and, and they're both, I, I think, well-run and, and contribute to the community, so I have absolutely no problem.
I don't, I don't know that much about the program, but they're the only nonprofits that apply. That's not to say that other, other nonprofits in, in town could, could do the same thing.
No, anyone, any nonprofit can, any nonprofit, or actually, I think the, I wanna say municipal, municipals, municipalities can apply for this too.
Yeah, 'cause it's only been the church and Kirtland Commons the last number of years that I'm aware of, and.
As far as I know, the last five years.
I'm just curious as to if other nonprofits and whatnot even know about it, but that's, again, that's not, that's not us, it's them, but.
Well, you know, I think, I think this is pretty well-advertised in that nonprofit world, you know? I think these guys, they, nonprofits get their, get their notifications well before we do.
Yep.
Anyway, if you're, if you're ready to go, we can vote and go.
I'm good.
Well, I, I would say we'd make a motion to accept the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Tax Credit for the Deep River Congregational Church and the Kirtland Commons, if that's the appropriate motion for what we need to do.
Yep, the only thing I would ask, if we could change that to approve the application.
Oh, to approve the, the tax credits for Deep River Congregational Church and Kirtland Commons.
I'll second.
Any further, without any further discussion, is there, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is, again, we've already discussed the tax anticipation notes, we talked that over, I think, a month ago, and we, at that time, approved a resolution that, that we would, we would authorize that and move it to a town meeting. Again, we're not yet at the point where we need to really adopt this, we're not even into the next fiscal year yet, but I did wanna have a conversation, just keep it in the front of everyone's mind, that it is something, we've done, done a lot of work, Bud and I have sat down, and we'll hear a lot more about it later on. Bud and I have done an awful lot of work, looking at, at where we're, where our monies come in and when our monies go out, and, you know, we collect almost 50% of our revenue in the first three months of the year, and we spend a better part of a, a better part of a third of our budget, a better part of a third of our budget is spent in the first, by the end of September. Given that the tax relief that, that we were mandated by the state to, 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 to allow for our community, we're, we don't really know where we're going to be.
Yeah, I wondered if there was any.
Come time of October, you know, and, and while we collect, and we'll hear more later on, but we do collect about 40, about 40% of the taxes that we collect are through bank escrows. So that's, that's a positive, so 40% of the.
Bankkeep money.
Right, so 40% of the 50% of the revenue comes through the bank, so we can count on that. But when you see the, the graph that Bud's gonna share with us later, you'll see that if we, if 30% of the folks take advantage of, of the tax relief, then by October 1st, we will be, we'll be very close to, to having spent all of our, all of our money, and without, without going into our reserves yet.
Right.
Still, we will have spent, spent the money. And I get, I don't think there's any reason to put ourselves in that position, basically. I think we should be prepared. I don't, I don't think, I don't think I'm ready to act on this until, until the end of July, anyway. But I do think, and, and the authorization, we, you guys did authorize, Tom and I to, to make arrangements and get the information from the banks, and I do think it's, it's important for us to get this set up, not to make the borrow, but to be prepared, so that when, when September or October gets here, and we find we do need to borrow, we're not starting from square one. These are all the same arguments that we've made before, and that we've had conversations about before, but, you know, it's looking at the hard numbers instead of just theoretical numbers, and we'll enjoy that later on, but it's, it's, it's pretty frightening, or it can be frightening, if we, if we really are just 30% short of what we expect. Even 20% puts a lot of pressure on, 30% is, is too much for us to handle. And, and it's important to remember that this money, this borrow, is a borrow that needs to be repaid in this fiscal year. It's not for any projects, it is really only to spend this money on money that is already budgeted.
Right.
So you're not, we're not doing any new projects, we're not taking on anything new, it's really just to ensure that we are able to, to, to meet the obligations that we've already agreed to, to take on. So, there's nothing, there's nothing that we need to do today, other than have more conversations.
Right, yeah, I think we need to keep in the forefront. I gotta believe, you know, by that Thursday, or not Thursday, the end of the July meeting, that generally speaking, Kate would know how the town is doing with the tax collection, you know, what a normal year would be, and then she would have that as a reference to what is happening this year, and that would probably be very, a very good time to gauge, you know, when, when to do it, or if we should do it.
It'll be a good indicator, it'll be a really good indicator, you know.
On which way we're going, yep.
Yep, and I, I think you'll see too, that July is, you know, these percentages, when Bud shares the numbers, it'll, it'll be much more, obviously, visible for you, but it is, I, I wanna say July, we, we collect about 40% of the 50% that we collect. In the first three months, we collect 40% of that in July. So July's a big month for us, and we'll see, we'll see how that goes. That's, that's where I am as far as the tax anticipation notes, we'll have a much longer discussion later on. I don't think we're gonna take any action, or I don't think Board of Finance is going to or has a need to take any action either, it's just Bud, Bud and I have a lot of more information for everybody, we want everyone to be aware that if, if we see, see a need, we're able to move forward, that's really all.
I'll, I'll wait until I see the numbers, 'cause I'm a little confused right now, because you're saying we collect 50% in July.
Yep.
But we, but we get 40% from the mortgage companies.
40% of that 50%.
It's from the mortgage, so that leaves 10, leaves 10% left, correct?
40% of 50%.
No, it means 25% left. 40% of the 50% that we collect, so I don't know the numbers, and we'll see them, but let's just, for the sake of this conversation and easy math, let's say we collect, for easy math, we collect $1,000 in July, normally, that's 50% of our, we have a, for easy math, we've got $2,000 that we're anticipating to collect, we usually collect 1,000 of that in July, August, and September. 40% of that 1,000, so $400 is through escrow. We got that other 600.
I was, I was confused when you said 50%, I thought 50% in July and 50% in January or December, there's your 100%, so that's why I'm saying, I'm having a hard time figuring out the math there.
I know, as I was, you know, and then I threw the 40% of something else in there, and it's, you know, this is just getting crazy, it's gonna be a much better conversation when you've got.
Looking at the numbers.
So, I think we can, just really just table that for, for, for next month, when we can take some action on it. My hope is that if I, if the governor's, and I actually have a call-in to CCM and to OPM about the process for that, because just like the budget, I, I would like this, these are the kind of things that the town should be voting on, not, not just us, and if we can delay this until late July, or maybe even early August, for a town meeting where we can safely get people in the auditorium, and if the guidelines allow for that to happen, then that's what I, that's, I would much prefer that, so the town can come, the town can not have to go to their computer to participate, and not just listen and ask questions, but we'll actually have a, have a vote, and that's what we need to get back to, and I think that's the time to do it.
Yep.
As far as that goes, we can move right, unless anybody has anything else to talk about with that, we will table that and move to Audiences Citizens, and, and I'll just give you a heads-up. We are continuing our efforts to open the Town Hall to the public. Right now, the only thing that's holding us up is the, is being able to procure some of the things that we need in order to do that. We've got all the, all the Plexiglas that's going up, this is, is in, we are, we're adding some Dutch doors to our office doors, like the tax assessor's office, so that, you know, while the Town Hall's open and the public computer will be outside in the hallway, the actual access to the office will be, will be through voice through the top of that Dutch door. So we'll still be able to help everyone, assist everyone with what they need, we can have meetings out in the conference rooms, but access to the private offices, the way this building is set up, these offices are so small, it's such narrow, always into them, it's just the Health Department has been working with us to try to figure out how best to do that. So we're waiting on some of those materials, but I'm, my goal is still July 1st, but I think the more realistic date is probably July 6th, is when the Town Hall will be open to the public. The library opened today.
Oh, okay.
And I think they had, or yesterday, maybe, and they had about 15 people in there, so, you know, people are starting to utilize the library again, so those are good, good things. I was a little frustrated, we worked hard, and actually not frustrated, we saw the Little League is starting up again.
Yeah, saw that, saw that over the weekend.
Yep, the men's softball is playing, and they seemed like they were pretty well-spread out, and, you know, there was only about two teams, so there's 25 or 30 people down there, so that was, that was nice. I was a little frustrated with the horseshoe gang, we had worked pretty hard with them, and they had assured me that they were going to be spread out, and, and wearing their masks, and, you know, less than 50 people, and I didn't stop and count, but if there was 50 people there, there was 75 or 100, I mean, it was a big crowd, and I didn't see a mask on, so trying to communicate with them a little bit, that we really, we're in good shape. we're in good shape, but this is far from over, and I'd really hate to see, hate to see a spike in numbers in Deep River in particular, but in Connecticut in general, because we're just starting to relax.
Well, if you see the numbers down south, you know, they're 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 spiking down in Florida and Texas and all that. And you just hope that, and I know the governor has been considering, you know, anybody coming from those hot zones if you want, or, you know, considering a two-week quarantine for those people coming up because they have the snowbirds or the summer, the summer birds or whatever might want to start coming home here and.
Right.
Gotta play it safe.
We don't want your disease coming to Connecticut. We've done very well for the past three months, so.
You know, Connecticut's done pretty well. If you look at the numbers, they're, they really are, the hospitalizations are going down. It's a little bit frustrating for me and for other community leaders because the the testing seems, there was an odd report that came out yesterday regarding testing in Connecticut. And they're shutting down a couple of of sites. They're going back to where you you absolutely have to have a doctor's prescription to get to get tested. And I haven't read it thoroughly yet, but it it seems like they're cutting back on the testing at a time when we really need to to get to increase the testing in order to to track to trace this. I mean, they're spending an awful lot of money on the on the tracking. But without testing, there's no way to really track. So that's a little bit frustrating.
Well, it'll be interesting. It'll be interesting because now the restaurants open up less than a week now. We'll see in the next couple of weeks to see what happens, whether we stay low or there's a little spike after everything's opened up, so.
I I think, you know, I think we have to expect a little spike. Because we are opening up, you know, and we've done, we've done such hard work to to try to slow this down. And I think it was a successful effort in Connecticut to to do that. It was, it's. We we do have to remember, we're not going to end this. It's not, it's not going to go away. If we just stay inside, it's not going to go away. It's, we did, we tried staying inside, and it slowed it down, but it didn't go away, and it's not going to, so.
Not going away.
Probably ever. So we'll, people are going to continue to get sick. We just have to really remember to be careful. And that's that's really the message I want to try to get back sending out again, so to be careful. I don't have a whole lot of other things. We're we're at the end of the fiscal year. We'll talk about that probably later on at the Board of Finance meeting. We will see, we're trying some new, it's not new, I guess, but it's new for Deep River. It's not oil and stones, but it's 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 a, it's a, some type of oil that apparently softens up the pavement and and kind of rejuvenates. I think it's called rejuvenator. And we're going to try that on Kelsey Hill, on on Dr. Landing and over at Flatwood. We'll try that out this this, actually sometime in the next, in the next few weeks, we should see people out there doing that. And then we'll seal the, we'll come back a month later and put some stones and crack sealer in in those places. And that's supposed to add five or five or seven years to the to the pavement. So I think that, you know, as we as we work our way through the worst of the roads, we can try to prolong some of the roads that aren't bad enough to tear up and repave yet, and and maybe save some there. So that's kind of an experiment.
Do we have to do any repairs to Kelsey Hill before they do it? I know there's a catch right by the entrance to Kelsey, to Regional. It's pretty horrible.
Yep. No, the guys were out there today tearing that up. I think they're going to patch that sometime next day or so.
Okay. Oops.
He froze, he froze.
We lost you.
Hello.
Really?
No, you're back.
You're back.
Now you're back.
That's funny because when you guys were telling me I was frozen, I could hear you, but the computer said nothing. As soon as you said I was back, the computer said your internet is stable. Unstable. So I don't know. Sorry about that. We're going to try to get a, you know, Kelsey Hill patched. We're going to do some more patching at the at the end at the Westbrook side of Westbrook Road. And and then we're we're taking bids now for for Hemlock, Hemlock Hill Drive Extension. That's that's in really bad shape. Lord's Lane, Anderson Lane. There's, I think there's three other, three other roads that we need to, taking bids on. So we'll be out there. I imagine that they won't get out there until until August or September, but.
It's a works.
Yep, that's going on there.
And those are new repaves, Angus, or re rejuvenation?
No, those those will be repaves. Those are in bad shape. Hemlock in particular is in very bad shape. That's going to be, that's going to be torn right back down, and all of them actually are.
It's pretty bad.
Lord's Lane's in bad shape. Lord's Lane is a difficult, where we where we, where we stopped with that. I think there was a reason that Dick stopped paving right there, and that's because there's a chunk of ledge in there.
Yeah.
Probably from Africa. And that's going to be a difficult section to do, but it needs to be done. So we're going to get in there and and we're going to take that right down too, so we can see where the ledge is and maybe regrade the road a little bit to make it a little bit more passable. I can't think of anything else that we have right now. So.
The only thing I'd say is that, you know, the valley had their graduation, and I I was up there of the procession, if you will, at Valley. Kim was on the ambulance. And and it really, you know, it's it's not your typical high school graduation, but I think in a lot of ways, and maybe some of the kids would maybe differ with my opinion, but, you know, having having, it's, it was very unique. You know, they were honking their horns and balloons and all that, and one girl that I know, she rode on the back of her dad's motorcycle through the through the graduation and the parade just a couple of days ago, and and she was pretty excited about it. So is it traditional? No. Is it different? Yes. Is it memorable? Absolutely, I believe. And I think, I don't know how attendance was on the parade up in Chester or Essex, but I know we had a pretty good turnout in Deep River. But people, you know, you know, waving to them and all that when they came through town. And I just, I hope that Chester and Essex had, you know, some good turnout too, because it's a, it was a unique situation, and and they deserve some recognition for what they had to go through this year, so.
Twenty years, twenty years from now, they can say, I bet you never had a high school graduation like we did. We got a parade. Did you get a parade? You know, so. Unfortunately, it wasn't your traditional graduation, which I feel sorry for the children because they've all worked so hard. But, you know, I think they've all tried to make the best of it, and the parade is it was a great idea, you know.
It was a good idea, and it worked out. The faces of not just the graduates, but the families coming down in the cars was really nice to see. It was, it was fun to see.
There's something that's stood for tradition, but I know it's been the Board of Ed sitting up there at the traditional one, and it's nine thousand degrees, and you're sitting up there in this. And you're going, you're sweating your rear end off, and I know the kids were doing the same thing. So that's why I gotta believe maybe in hindsight, you know, twenty years down the road, like Dwayne says, these kids will go, well, that was a pretty cool way to graduate. I might, I might be totally up the creek on that one, but it, I think it was good for them.
I think so too. I'm glad you said something. I I kind of, I didn't make a note to speak to that. And it was, that graduation was was unique, but it was, it was really, it was, it was fun to watch. The speeches were were all good. The performances, as usual, were just unbelievable. They did a version of Lock Loma, one of my favorite songs. It's a pretty melancholy tune, but it's really fun to listen to. They're amazing talents up there.
Yeah, that's for sure. Yep.
Anything else? I see public, we have Lori and Alan here. If anybody has anything to, for public comment. If not, let's, let's entertain a motion to adjourn and come back for the Board of Finance in a half hour.
I second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, guys. Thank you.
See you.
See you in a half hour.
Okay.
All right. With that in mind, good evening. This is the June two thousand twenty Board of Finance meeting for the town of Deep River. The first item on our agenda should be the approval of the minutes from, Lori, fill in the date. We've only had one meeting we need to.
No, we've had two. We have the May, regular May twenty-six meeting. We also have the special June nine meeting.
All right. Excellent. All right. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved that we approved the minutes from May twenty-six and from the special meeting of June nine.
I'm second to that motion.
All right. Any discussion, absent any discussion, I'm rushing through. All those in favor approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Next item would be Audience of Citizen. Alan, I saw you over there. You're not appearing immediately on my screen. I'm going to invite you to join us as a citizen. Is that okay?
I'm going to put it under other business if that's all right.
That is fine. Alan, you with us? I saw Alan there a moment ago.
I I'm with you. Can you hear me?
Good, 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 good. Thank you.
Yes.
Alan is a member of the Planning and Zoning. He has sent to me an email asking that we consider increasing the budget of the Planning and Zoning. I sent it to all of you. I think the first thing to do is allow Alan the the floor to guide us through what you think is the way to discuss it. Alan, it's yours.
Okay, I'll try to be, I'll try to be brief and concise. I do have a tendency to get wordy at times. And just interject if you have questions as I go, but the 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 summary of this is, we had, we had a significant reduction in our budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, and a lot of it is resulting from the expenditure of the salary in in this in this current year, whereas we went with without a CEO for a considerable time, and when we did finally retain a CEO, the CEO salary was was considerably less than in prior years. It was it was approximately, as a rough order of magnitude, half of what the the typical salary had been historically. We tried to bring this issue up as you were considering the budget before, but it was, it came in very late in the process. But we had concerns that the projected budget, when it was based on that significantly reduced salary, would be insufficient for us to really hire a CEO with the appropriate qualifications and for the amount of time that we we anticipate that we're going to need from the CEO. You know, I think there's been discussion with the selectmen that there's an expectation that we will have significant activity in Deep River this this coming fiscal year, partially as a result, the result of COVID. We, there's the anticipation that there could be a lot of new residents starts. But regardless, there there will be a significant need for inexperienced CEO. We, last year when we pursued a a CEO, we did solicit a presentation from CME, which is a consulting firm that provides these services, just as the RiverCog does. And there was significant interest in going that route because of the breadth of experience that an organization like that could bring, not just in enforcement, but also in planning. So that's, it's kind of been on a table for consideration for a while, is is procuring services in that way. So the situation we're in now is that we we did have the CEO sign. We are in a position of having to retain those services and or hire a CEO. Our expectation is that we will hire a permanent CEO as we have always had in town. But that process, our experience has been that that process can take some significant time, especially when you're trying to find the right fit. So I guess the, long and short of it is, we believe that we are going to need a salary which is commensurate with salaries in other towns and approximately where we were in fiscal year eighteen nineteen or nineteen twenty. This is a a professional position with somebody who requires certification. And it's it's not a, you know, a mere clerical position. We've also, we also reached out to CME to solicit a proposal as a follow-up to their presentation from last year. And we got a proposal, and they're currently serving as our interim CEO, and the rate of for their services as a consultant services is twenty-five hundred dollars per month. So that's where we projected the budget from, working with those numbers. And that number is also commensurate where with where we were when we used the RiverCog last year as an interim CEO.
Um, Alan, is that, how is that twenty-five hundred? Is that for an hourly? Is it a salary that they do everything we need for twenty-five hundred, or is it an hourly?
Well, basically, in in, we've we've got to look at the, how we contract with them presently to get them on board. It is a a monthly consulting fee with a projection of hours. The hours that they're able to fulfill are slightly less than what we were able to cover with a salaried person. And the, what we anticipate is that with their breadth of experience, we're paying for their experience, not for their hours per se, but it's expected that they will be able to cover our our needs. But they'll need to cover it in slightly less hours. If we want to have the same number of hours.
What is slightly less hours? What is slightly less hours?
Um, I think presently, Angus, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think currently the the hours in office are eight hours a week, covered covered over two, two days a week, and then also participation in the P and Z meeting. So it's approximately eight hours per week and what was projected, what we would get from CME, and it hasn't been an exact determination of hours, but the projection is about five hours.
Correct. We asked, we asked for an average of ten hours a week. That's what we have had in the past, and that's what our contract that I'm negotiating right now with CME is for an average of ten hours a week, which allows them, you know, for the four, four and a half hours twice a week, and also allows time for meeting attendance. I think that, given the contract, that that, or the 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 expected rate or the expected fee from CME or CHA is going to reduce those hours to probably five hours a week. So I think it cuts it in half, but that's, you know, that's that's just part of the part of the negotiation that we're having right now.
And their hourly rate is what at four and a half hours, two times a week plus the meeting?
Averaging, using the average of ten hours a week, their hourly rate is a hundred and twenty-five an hour, which is not, which for a, for a professional firm is not, not untoward.
And what would it be for a zoning officer?
That's, that's, to Alan's point, that that's depends on the experience and the qualifications of that person. Person that we hired last was getting paid twenty-seven dollars an hour, which was on the, and this, this is on the lower end of what the CASIO, which is the Connecticut Association of Zoning Enforcement Officers, suggested rate for a person of her experience was. I would suggest that if we have an individual, we were, the average rate for individuals, for towns and communities of our size and and our demand will be somewhere in the vicinity of between thirty and forty dollars an hour.
So the 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 budget that I that I ask you to consider is basically split between six months of consulted services and six months of a CEO fully on board with some overlap. In the transition, we would anticipate that the consulting services would lap for essentially the equivalent of a month. I'm not sure what the arrangement would be, that you don't want to just kind of drop one and have somebody pick it up cold. So there there would be some overlap. The net is that a, for a six-month period for the CEO, we were projecting sixteen thousand five hundred. And for the equivalent of consulted services through CHA, CME, was seventeen thousand five hundred, and that was for a essentially seven months or or eight months being six months full-time CEO services with two months of of part-time transition services. So the the net rate between a full-time CEO and the consulted services is 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 very. the net rate between a full-time CEO and the consulted services is, is, is very equitable. To be honest, we, we don't know. We would like to procure obviously a, a permanent CEO as quickly as we can. But if we're going to get the right person, we need to anticipate that, um, we allow time for the process. It does allow us to budget for those services regardless of how those services are, are rendered. But it might take some, you know, a administrative adjustment of the budget to move, uh, the dollars from, uh, consulting service to the CEO salary or, or vice versa. When we had this, this discussion, we certainly considered other areas in our budget that, uh, might be adjusted. And we thought it was prudent to leave those as they were. I mean, as you, if you look at our, you know, uh, engineering services, engineering review, where we had a, a, uh, budget of 15,000 in prior years, but only expanded 14,500. Uh, it, it looks like there's a significant surplus there. However, it was pointed out that in past years, we do use that full 15,000. So we didn't want to get caught short, uh, having to go back and, you know, if we were to reduce that by 5,000 to, to try to, help the budget, we would find ourselves short. I think it's the same scenario with the CEO. If we try to anticipate that we would get a, CEO for a salary less than what we have had in previous years, it doesn't give us the latitude to, to hire the best qualified individual should we find them. So, uh, really what the ask is, is to restore our budget, um, to what it, for the CEO and/or consulting services to what it was in fiscal year 19 and 20. Because again, the, the adopted budget, uh, was based on a year where we, we did not have a CEO in place. So carrying that budget forward leaves us with a, a very significant shortfall. So I would, um, I, I think that Bud shared, uh, my, my email with the, with the rationale behind this and the, the numbers in front of you. So I will, uh, I'll turn it back to you for, for any questions or clarifications.
Alan, just before your, your division between salary line item and consulting, half and half is sort of Solomon-esque, right? I mean, you were just, half is as good as any. I'm, I'm just, I just want to probe, I'm a little uncomfortable. It's got assumptions. And we still need some information to zero in on what your budget should be.
Yeah, the, um, there are some assumptions here. Um, and that assumption is that it would take us six months potentially to land a full-time CEO. There is certainly the potential, especially in, in this marketplace that that person is but we're only starting the process for, uh, the search for the CEO now. I know last year it, it, uh, had some, some, some bumps in the process, but the, the process to procure a, to hire a CEO last year was a, was a fairly long process. And I think that it's very important that we get the right person in place now and not rush to, to hire somebody that we may not be able to retain. It's, uh, so again, yes, you're, you're correct. It's a bit Solomon-esque, but, um, I don't, I, I don't have the vision exactly the way they split. It would, it would mean that we have the appropriate funds in place. But they may require some reallocation depending on how quickly that process can proceed and, and finish.
And, and that is good. And, and I guess I just want to offer to the Board of Finance and to you, why do we have to rush? Why don't we just encourage you to get a planning and zoning officer as quickly as possible? Once you have that number and we know how much is remaining for a consultant, we put your budget in place then.
Well, the, the consulting services are used primarily as the interim CEO until we have a permanent CEO. So the consulting services have, the, the, that number needs to be put in place.
And I, and I follow your logic. I mean, we as the Board of Finance can sort of nod that it is in place. We don't have to actually get you, have you officially with a budget yet. I guess, and others should join in. And you and Angus need to work this out, but I've got to offer that the, uh, a, uh, consulting firm of that cost seems beyond what Deep River needs and rather expensive. Oh, by the way, I want to compliment you on how you put your budget together to get exactly to where it would, what it was. So, uh, you've done a, you've done a fine job of accomplishing what you want. But that is my going in. The split between CEO and consulting, I'm a bit uncomfortable with. And I just don't think we have enough information. You don't have enough, we don't have enough to actually put your budget in place, other than give you encouragement to get started on the CEO officer.
Well, the, the reality is that we have our consultant in place and we're working on a contract. And those are the numbers that are in fact solid and, and firm. And those numbers are also commensurate with, uh, when we transition from the consulting service to a CEO. They stay virtually the same. There, there is no significant difference in the expenditure to the town for the same services. So again, when you, when you begin to, to, uh, put this discussion in context to an hourly rate, it's not a legitimate argument because you're paying for the experience of, uh, the firm or the individual providing the service. It's, uh, it was the opinion of Planning and Zoning Commission that, um, uh, CME, CHA, uh, would be able to meet our needs on the same budget that we would allocate for a CEO. But it gives us some latitude depending on what we need, that we get the expert, expertise within enforcement or in planning or in, uh, other services that they're, that they're able to provide. And we're not, we're not focused on the individual. But the, but the delivery of the necessary services with the appropriate expertise.
Can I ask a question for, for a minute? Just a little bit of background for me. I apologize, Alan, for not having, um, a historical background on what happens on planning and zoning, but what would you need a, um, consulting service for to, um, what are you, what are they consulting in? What, what is our town doing that needs a firm to be paid $125 an hour? Are we having such a massive development, um, going on in town that we need someone immediately right now?
There are, uh, a lot of immediate needs. Uh, we've had, uh, several, um, um, applications that have come to planning and zoning that have been handled administratively, which requires the, the expertise of the CEO. Some of them have been very significant. Some of them have been, uh, COVID-driven. And we see other, um, uh, businesses making applications to, uh, restart businesses that, that stopped during COVID. So there is that type of activity. There's, as I mentioned earlier, uh, there's also the, the, uh, projection that there will be significant activity in Deep River and, and, um, you know, I would cite, um, uh, the first selectman from, from the meeting that they anticipate that there will be a lot of activity in Deep River. That requires, um,
Immediate attention?
Yes. Yeah, I, I don't want to answer it for Alan, um, but I will speak to that particular question. It is, it is in fact critical that that office be filled. The town, planning and zoning is, is a, is a, is a, is a very, very important, um, part of how this town moves forward, how this town stays the same or how this town goes backward. Manning that office with, with a qualified person is critical to, to how we proceed.
So that kind of goes to Bud's question then. Can it be sort of held in abeyance for a while until an off, an officer is found? Which would alleviate $125 an hour for a consulting service to accompany a zoning officer?
The, the salary can be held in abeyance, but the consulting services are necessary. That's what we can have immediately. And I think that, uh, there would be a minimum of three months while we handle the immediate issues and transition into a, a, a new, a new CEO. Expect even with the, with the, uh, the best conditions to get the position advertised, to do the interview process and get somebody hired. I would say the, the quickest that could really probably happen would be about two months. And Angus, uh, please weigh in here, but I, I would think that the, um, to find a qualified candidate, it would be a minimum of two months. So I was, I was certainly hedging my bets and part of it was a result of a direction established by Planning and Zoning last year in the initial, uh, search for a CEO is, was a discussion of, do we get better service? Using a consulting firm that has a, a broader range of services, such as, we're, we're at a point where we, we need to engage in, uh, planning activities. EDC is beginning to do surveys, looking at, uh, where we're going to do business development in town, what opportunities exist there. It is, uh, time we begin to look at our plan of conservation and development, which is a broader, uh, planning exercise. And a lot of times the CEO does not bring the same planning expertise. It is a, it is a, um, a nuanced, uh, professional service. And that's something that's, uh, CME, CHA, uh, does bring to the table.
So am I understanding that you're talking about having six months of a consulting service work side by side with a hired CEO so that we have two of them?
It would be in lieu of. So until we can have a, a full-time CEO onboard, we would have the consulting services instead of. And they are in place right now. Um, but the, the budget is not in place for them. So, um, and, and again, uh, the offset, uh, if, once we eliminate the consulting services and go to a full-time CEO, it is the same expenditure for those same services by the town of Deep River. It's not additive. It's not more. It's not less. You know, in, in negotiation, and again, the negotiations with, with a consulting firm are not complete for the, for the ongoing that would, that can be discussed, the, the length of hours and the cost of the service. But it has been anticipated that it would be commensurate.
That's, that's too high a salary rate as far as I'm concerned.
It's not a salary rate. It's a professional service rate.
A professional service rate. As far as I'm concerned, that's more than this town needs. We need a zoning enforcement. We don't need one at that cost. I am not in favor. We don't, whenever we have somebody else from another department come and say, hey, you know, we know this is coming up, but we don't know how much it's going to be. One of the things we prefer is that they work with the selectmen to keep the budget impact as low as possible. And they, the selectmen will keep us up to date with the backing information from the department on how things are going financially, what the impact. So I don't want to give you 10,000 and you have to come back and then now need another 10,000. We now have to go to a town meeting for that additional 10,000 because we already have made one transfer. So I'm not in favor of doing any transfers, any increases to the budget until we get much better information.
Right now is that the, the rate that we need to proceed with is the consultant's rate because we do not have a CEO and are not positioned to have one, uh, immediately. And the reality is this budget is not an increase to Deep River. It's what we, we have had for many years until the town went without a CEO, uh, for many months last year. So we're not looking at an increase. We're looking at a budget, which is what the budget has been in town for, for many years. So.
Alan, I, 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 I want to, I want to make a statement. I'm not arguing with you. I, I actually agree with you that we do need to have someone in place. But you've said a number of times tonight that this budget was prepared based on last year's experience with, with a, a CEO not in place. That is not an accurate statement. The budget was prepared based on the CEO that we had in place when we prepared the budget. With, you know, three or $4,000 added to them. So this, this budget was, was based on the salary that has been agreed upon with the CEO that's in place. 0.25% increase multiplied times 52 years or 52, 52 weeks. But this is not at all based on any time that we spent without a CEO. I just want to make sure that you understand that, that it was, this is, this is based on a salary from the CEO that was chosen by the Planning and Zoning Commission put in place. I, I, I will agree with you. It is important that we have to have someone in this office. I will, I will say, um, with the limited experience with, uh, CHA in, in our office, these guys are very professional. They're very competent. Um, and we are in good hands, uh, while they are here. Um, I can, I can speak. I, I can only, only put, speak praise on what I've, what I've, um, heard, uh, their services are and what I've seen them do. But I think it's also important to, to differentiate between saying this, the, the line item cost is the same when there is in fact the difference in the amount of hours that that office will be open. And that's an important factor for me. You know, maybe they can do the same amount of work in half the time. Maybe they can't. I don't, I don't know the answer to that. And we won't know that until they're here for an extended period of time. But I, I struggle with, um, with keeping that office closed for, for, um, for half the time that it, that it has been open for it. We do get a lot of calls. Um, Gina does way too much work answering those calls. And I know that, um, and, and pulling files for them and things like for people. Uh, so I do struggle with that part of, of this equation. The cost, yes, the cost is the same if you just pull purely by the, the financial end of it, but services for the community, at least on the surface, and, and maybe you can explain it a better way for me to understand it, but services to the community do get chopped, or availability to the community do get chopped in, virtually in half. So, um, I, I just, I think that it's, it's important to, to keep those two factors in mind as we continue this conversation. I, I will tell for the benefit of the Board of Finance, we are in fact working on a contract right now that will keep, uh, CHA in place, uh, at least through July 30th. That, that budget, um, that, that contract, I, I think it was, it was very important and it was worthwhile for us to at least get seven weeks of consistency. It caught up with some of the things that may have been missed, um, and to ensure that there's some continuity with, with CHA.
Where, where, where does the money come from that pays for that contract?
What we're doing right now is we are, uh, we're entering into this contract with, uh, there's, there's money remaining in this year's budget, this year's salary line that, um, allows for, for, to get through this fiscal year. And hopefully, uh, we, we will encumber, uh, a month's worth of this year's, uh, surplus from that salary line to cover the four weeks of, uh, of CHA services.
So if I heard that correctly, you're going to pay the consulting firm in the next fiscal year from what was said in the previous fiscal year?
Yes, it is, um, it is, it, it's money that was, that was saved, um, as a result of the, uh, and, and that's, that's what I would like to do. We, we have money in the budget to cover them through July regardless of whether we do that or not. I would like to do that because we have that surplus money in that salary line already.
I must say, I'm not comfortable with two different fiscal years covering each other.
No, I understand that. I, I liken it to, um, the fact that, and I'll use the example, last year we had contracted with, with road contractors to come in and pave in, in, you know, in the spring. And that money was from that year's budget. The rain and the weather and their schedules did not allow them to get here until July or August. We had encumbered that money because of the contract that we had signed. So that the fact that they paved the roads in fiscal year 19, 20, we still are able to utilize fiscal year 18, 19 funds to pay for that because of the contract.
Which we talked about and, and then.
Yep, and that's why we're here tonight talking about it.
We did the same with the fire department, if you remember their turnout gear, they did not buy it all.
I was not comfortable with that one either.
No, and it's, it's one of those things, Russ, where um, we have the money in the budget for next year to cover them for uh, for, I, I don't know the months, um, but we have, there is money in next year's budget to cover them, but we will have to adjust the budget accordingly.
There's about $19,000 in the salary line item from last year that went unexpended. And our entire consulting expectation for next year was budgeted at 17,000.
That's right, it was $27 an hour.
Drastic reduction in.
Then I, it was a reduction based, it was a reduction based on the person we had in place. It was not a reduction to cut any services, it was not a reduction to try and limit anything. It was simply a reduction based on what we had in place. And frankly, it, it was, it was a consideration that um, Deep River can, in my opinion, Deep River is better served by a, just what you're talking about. Better served by a zoning enforcement officer who is in, in place and, and.
Let's go back to that 19,000 again, that was saved in fiscal year 1820.
Yes.
Because of what again?
We initially budgeted for Kathy and she left and we replaced it with a lower cost employee during that fiscal year.
I don't see where you could get $19,000 out of that.
You, you easily can.
She was 32 or something, yeah, exactly, and the other one came in at 15 or something.
We had services provided by the River Cog.
Yeah.
Uh, 25% of which was, um, was, was, was not paid for uh, out of this budget because it came as a um, part of our dues. Uh, so, so you know, when we say, and just as an aside, when we say that these, that C H A is salary or a fee that is commensurate with, with River Cog, that's not entirely accurate, it is, it is, it is.
If I, if I looked at the um, the budget that Jonathan provided to the, the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, the months that um, um, the River Cog did bill was in the order magnitude of $2,500 a month for that consultant service. I understand that they did not bill uh, all of the months while we were, while we did not have a uh, Z E O because it was covered under the dues. But when they did bill us, it was of the, of the same order of magnitude.
Well, that's right, but, but you have to take the whole picture, you can't just pick a piece of it and say this is what they charge per hour when, when there is a reduction to that over the course of the year. Then that's regardless of that, um, and I'm sorry I brought us into that lead. Uh, the, the idea of Russ is that we have savings from that particular line. Um, and we can utilize them, I believe, uh, to, to ensure that we have a professional service in that office um, over the amount of time that we may or may not be able to get someone. Um, I, I liked the idea of utilizing a month uh, you know, this contract, signing, signing this contract with guarantees that we're going to have somebody there for at least through July. I, I don't think there's any way we're going to have, we were, we're already advertising, so we'll, we'll, we'll start getting applications. But um, based on last year's experience, and I hope this year's experience goes better for both us and the applicants.
My, my understanding of how financially, and I, I don't argue, I know, I, I dealt with P and C very, very often. Um, it's a very important commission, first of all, the Z E O is a very important position within that. Uh, I have zero argument with that. Um, but from a process point of view, money that is left over at the end of a budget year generally goes back in the general fund and then you need to um, reallocate it in the next year. You have to change, change this year's budget, not take money from last year's budget. Maybe I understand that wrongly, but that's the way I understand it. And then. And Alan, I did, I have talked before at various places and, and enjoyed, uh, every time we met, I enjoyed our talk and I thank you for coming tonight. Here is my bit of a problem, I'd like to know at the time, you, you have candidates and you choose one that you like that's uh, with experience and professional levels commensurate with Deep River. That's when I would like to make a decision and say, okay, the salary is 17,000 now, um, we think that person is worth 24 or that person is worth 37 or whatever it might be. But I have trouble just making a change to, to the budget without knowing. I'm fighting the birds here.
That's Bill.
That's Bill?
That's Bill's background.
So my, I, what I would like to do, you know, the, 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 the way it's done in the places I've worked and in my experience is here's a candidate. They're great, here's a candidate, they're okay, you know, here's a candidate we're comfortable with and we think they're worth X. Instead of just saying, oh sure, you, you, here's a bunch more money, go, go and do whatever it is you need to do. I, I'm not probably making myself terribly clear, but, but you see my point there.
No, no, I absolutely understand your point and I, and I appreciate it. And, and at first we did look at, um, and I think I had mentioned it uh, uh, previously is that we, we did look to see where we had a surplus this year of, of, of $40,000 in our budget because engineering fees were not expended and the salary was not expended. And we were thinking that we could begin to balance our budget, get the services we needed by, by allocating from this year. But we were, we steered away from that, trying to get the budget in place to ensure that we had the number necessary uh, for what we needed to do. And if we can negotiate the salary, which is much more favorable than what is um, you know, uh, what other towns are paying, which we did last year. If we do have that windfall, then that certainly can be returned. But I'd rather not go into a um, um, Z E O search with a budget that is potentially half of what we need to uh, procure that individual. Uh, it's just like the engineering services where we're dissuaded from reducing our budget. So even though we had a $15,000 budget and spent 500, it's uh, we're carrying 15,000 in the event that we might need it. You're going to get that money returned to the general fund this year. You're going to get nearly $20,000 in engineering fee uh, budget returned to you. But we need that in place in order to anticipate what we might need. So the, the same thought process is applied to the Z E O where we know if we get a fully qualified and certified Z E O of the um, level and experience of Kathy Jefferson, which I think we need, that we should have that money earmarked as opposed to we find the right person and then we have to come back to you and say, hey, you know what, find another $15,000 so we can hire this person. Um, you know, sometime, sometime three months from now or six months from now.
Okay, Alan, a couple things, um, one, I am not interested in having anything other than a monthly contract with a current consulting. The minute we get somebody in, they're done, thank you very much for your services, we have a new Z E O. That's my thought, okay. Um, also, any, if you're thinking, well, I can take money from my engineering line and, and apply it to my supplies line. No, that's engineering funds, that's not to be used.
We did not go that direction, I was, I was.
But I just don't want that missed, because that's with all departments. They want to spend a dollar on something that's not in that, their budget. They have to go and get.
And that's why we're asking to put the money in the budget line for the Z E O salary.
Okay, and my third point.
To take it from another line item.
Okay, but my third point is, if I know I have $20 to go spend on groceries, I'm going to go spend every 20 of that, not me personally, I'm not a shopper, but I'm going to go spend every penny of that $20. If I know I have $100, guess what, I'm going to go spend a full hundred dollars. The salary is the same way, hey, we're entitled, we can spend up to 50,000 a year on a person. You're going to go find somebody for 50, too.
Actually, we can't because it'll be a selectman who negotiates that salary.
Exactly, I think it's very important to understand that, yeah.
And, but I don't want that, I don't want to put money into a line without it coming back to the selectmen and the finance to say, okay, yes, this is what we will authorize. And I don't want to put anything in there until we know how much it's going to actually be. So the fact that we're covering through July, yes. Anything other than that, nope, God, it got to come back for it.
I will, I, I, I'm not trying to sway you at all, but I do want to make sure that you understand what Alan is, what Alan suggested. Um, that there be an overlap, I think is very important. There are ongoing projects, there are things that, that will need to be discussed. I think that is, that is a prudent uh, way to go. It won't be, it won't be a, a full month's worth of salary, but there will be some, some compensation. There will be some compensation for C H A to be able to communicate with the, whoever fills that, that seat.
Typical is two weeks, two weeks notice.
We had, not talking about when they leave, talking about the ability for them to be able to bring the new person up to speed with projects that are ongoing, with process, with, with things that had just happened, you know, um, we've had three different Z E Os, and this is just an example, we've had three different zoning enforcement officers in the past um, six months. Probably less than that. All three of those zoning enforcement officers got the same complaint from the same people. It would have been nice had the previous zoning enforcement officer communicated with the person prior, that was there prior to them saying, this is what's happening here. It's, it's a valuable service um, that, that I will, I will try very hard to make sure that there's the ability for that, for that overlap to happen. I don't want to, I, I don't, right now, I'm not comfortable with, with offering a contract beyond July. Um, and we'll, we'll talk with them more. Um, I, I think that's, but that doesn't, that doesn't speak, choose a question to you right now of what, what you do with the budget, that's, that's your decision, what you do with it. Um, I, I, I've expressed uh, already my concern about hours of the office, but that's, that's not a permanent decision either.
I, I have one other question and I, I, I'm not familiar with this uh, process and, and, and that kind of job at all. If, if there was a Z E O working full-time, let's say in a slightly larger town or a small city, what would they typically work for in a year, what would their salary be for a year? Do you have any feel for that?
Um, I think Angus has access to some of those salaries as well, but the um, uh, a salary in the order magnitude of 30,000 is commensurate with other towns of comparable size and complexity.
What, what about, what about a full-time annual salary though? Uh, and I realize, I'm not saying that's what Deep River needs, I'm just saying, if, if I were a Z E O and I was working 40 hours for, you know, X, Y, Z town.
Yeah, the, the thing is, you're not going to get that, most of the smaller towns either have a part-time Z E O or they might have a building official that covers um, um, uh, building permits as well as Z E O and inlands, you have a general um, land use official. Uh, so they might be approaching full-time, um. I don't have those numbers because I didn't research.
What's, what's our neighbors?
Full-time.
Essex, Essex has a, Essex has his zoning enforcement officer who works 30 hours a week. He's making, um, I believe he's making 60,000, 60, 60, 63, something like that. And I can't, don't hold me to that number, but that's very close to what he's.
Okay, good, that gives me an indicator anyway, just a ballpark. Thank you.
Uh, uh, I'm going to attempt to summarize, Alan, I appreciate your enthusiasm for having line items in your budget. I think I'm hearing, and I must admit I'm there too, too much uncertainty in your budget for us to lock it in yet. I'm going to suggest, and the board can jump in here, that you proceed with haste to find a planning and zoning officer. You come back to us and say the best person possible for the following reasons uh, with the selectmen in hand, by the way, when you say that, is going to cost us 30, 35 or something. That I think addresses the uncertainty of what you pay for a qualified person. Um, we, I do believe, as Angus is saying, we need to have someone in that office as qualified through certainly August, the town, uh, through July, maybe even August. So I'm going to suggest to you, you proceed, we've understand your budget, understand your needs. I'm going to encourage you to go after that zoning officer a little bit faster than three months and we'll probably, and we'll follow Angus's concept of overlapping for a while. But I would not think that, that's a long-term contract beyond a couple of months. Would you be supportive of leaving us, knowing that we are in support of what you want to do? Absolutely, and I, I think that's the intent. I, I think the intent is to work with uh, the first selectman to, to find the best uh, permanent services uh, available. Again, we had other discussions about can we, can we reduce costs by having a uh, administrative assistant in the, in the office to, to augment the, a much higher salary Z E O? Is, is, is some scenarios that can be looked at in terms of operations? And I would put that on, you know, uh, Angus to, to, you know, pursue that as well. But um, I guess what we were hoping for was a certainty that we, we've got a sufficient budget to maintain a Z E O without gap. And if it's a matter of a, you know, month-to-month contract, we're, I think we're, we're absolutely comfortable with that. Um, um, what I don't want to do is have to come back each month and say, you know, we've, we've, we need to extend the consulting services for a month and um, and, and again, that's why I, I guess I came in with the, the idea that we have a, a, a budget which splits between the two, which is a similar expenditure. But I think that there is a desire from the Board of Finance to uh, achieve the cost reduction that we achieved last year. And we will certainly work towards that with you. Good, good, we, we like cost reductions, I wish to encourage you. I, I think I'd like to say the Board of Finance, like you, wants the best services possible for the town and we do not wish to go cheap on it. But I just don't think you have enough information yet for us to zero in on what's the salary and what's the, the consulting. And we won't until we have that candidate, so. And that is, that is, that's the reason I encourage you to continue to pursue what you're pursuing. And I'm afraid you're going to have to come back either in email or with Angus, you're speaking for you over the next month or something like that. So I think you're in the right direction, I don't think anyone here is disagreeing with, and I think we're actually rather appreciative if you put somebody with great talent into that position. Right now it would be empty, so I appreciate it. And I appreciate the way you're trying to get it to the same level that we had when the, the prior zoning officer. So I, I wish to compliment the work you're doing, I just think it's still a little vague for us to lock in a number. Understood, I appreciate, I appreciate the, the feedback and I, I think we're on the same path strategically. I think so too.
Are there other companies that do what our current Z E O was doing at a lesser rate available?
If you're asking, generally speaking, yes, there are. Uh, but, but actually, one of the companies that did that just purchased C M A, C M A. So there's, there's one, there's one less.
That's why it keeps it in C M A and C H A, it's a, yeah, it's those two that are the same.
There, there are, there are other firms that are out there that do this, um, and, and we actually, we need to speak with one of them relatively quickly. Uh, as a, in, in, in line, at, at the same time that we're advertising for a zoning enforcement officer just because of contractual obligations. It's difficult for us to sign a contract without, without having.
Bits. Oh, good, excellent.
Yeah, I thought that, that needed to go out, any contract of that nature would have to, I would think.
Yep.
Good, good, all right, um, all right, Alan, I think we're going to send you out into the world with uh, with, with encouragement, but we're going to hold, we're not going to commit on your budget till you give us a little bit more information if you're, if you can work with that promise or that direction. Absolutely, I'll, I'll bring this back to uh, the commission and we'll, we'll work. Uh, here's a, I'm going to call it a side conversation, you have added legal to your budget, have you not? We, um, we discussed it, I don't think that there is any numbers in the legal line item. Um, we, it was put in there as part of the discussion amongst, amongst the commission that we realized we're incurring um, uh, legal expenses, but we don't have a budget for legal expenses. And the way that's handled is that the legal expenses are, are paid out of a, a. Selectment fund. A, a, a fund which is for all the land use offices. And so that flows really through, uh, I guess for a selectman would, would be the one that would uh, uh, handle those, those, those bills. And, and I, I'm going to offer some resistance to change. And, and I, I'm going to offer some resistance to changing that. I appreciate your talking about it. About Laurie may be the only one that can even remember, reached this far back. Ten years ago, made the number up. We had the planning and zoning suing or the planning appeals was suing in court, the planning. They were suing each other. Incurring gigantic fees. Obviously not something we were happy about, nor could we control because they all had legal fees in their budget. And what we did in response to that is we took all legal fees, summed them up, maybe even added some, put them in the selectmen's budget. So that people would have to say to the selectman, can I sue the planning and planning zoning board or the repeals board or something? We thought it provided some degree of discipline. So how about we just leave it that that's historical leaning and think about it?
What are the legal fees you're incurring?
We, planning and zoning often needs a, a legal opinion. And I, I, I think Angus would agree, especially this commission. That there's, it's both on operations, but on, it'll be interpretation of. Ordinances in legislation. It is a, a normal process for planning and zoning to have the, the consultation of a, a land use attorney.
It's necessary to have that. There are many, land use is a very specific, specific.
Field of law.
Cool. And it is, it is very, it's, it's critical that they have their own, their own attorney. Who can, who can represent them at meetings if necessary, who can answer questions. About interpretations of regulations and also can help them in their revisions of regulations.
Okay, but they've been keeping it to within, in your budget, they've been keeping it to within a certain amount of contracted time, I presume. With firm XYZ or?
Yes, the, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission has their own attorney, as does the. Zoning Board of Appeals and as should the, the Wellands Commission. All of those fees run through the selectman's office, but they hire, they, those, those people are hired by the, by the particular commissions. They're, they're, they are not contracted in the same sense that we're talking about with CHA. They are held on retainer. And they charge as they're used.
And that's certainly not something that you can plan around. It's, it's situational. You, you run into a situation with certain applications and conditions and we, we need to respond. So. Again, it was, it was, it was discussed. And at this point in time, we're not making any proposals to, to change that line item. The budget I put together was, that I presented to you was, was the basis and of the discussion, and it was revised. Back, you know, based on discussion with the, the commission and with Angus. That we would take to you for, for consideration and, and, and your input and response.
Can I interrupt here? I've, I've heard a lot of different discussions tonight. My question is, can you, do you have the ability or the finances or even the thought process at this point? To go out and. Respectively hire a new zoning officer? Or do you have to go back to Angus, order the board to say, I'd like to hire this guy, but I can't talk to him until I talk to you first? I mean, how much latitude do you have at this point?
The, the, the process is that the Planning and Zoning Commission will, will appoint a CEO. And then it, then it reverts to the, the selectman to hire that person because it is an employee of the town. So the CEO works for the commission, but is an employee. So this is a two stage process. We look for the person that's going to, that has the. Right working relationship and experience to meet our needs. And then we essentially hand it over to the selectman to negotiate the, the salary and work out the details of them.
Right. Well, I mean, we're, we're, we're looking for, we're looking, we're not looking for the lowest salary. We're not looking for the high risk salary. We're looking for the best quality. What we want is best value for what we're paying for. And how, how do we go about getting that? You get that by going out and trying to find the right person. Angus knows how much money we have available, I think. And we can go from there. If he doesn't know, maybe that's what this discussion is all about.
Not sure I understand that. I do know how much money we have available. I know how much money that I think that the town would, would, would be okay with spending if we have to increase that money that's available.
And what's the problem?
There's no problem. We're, I think we're all, we're all working towards the same thing.
Okay.
I think the problem is getting that person on board.
Problem is, the problem is that we don't have someone in place right now.
Finding that person and how much that person's worth.
Exactly.
The reason that I brought this to you and the problem that I would foresee is that to retain the person of the experience and certification. That the salary that we're budgeting for is insufficient. If we work from the lowest salary as to what we're going to budget for. That puts us in a position of trying to work towards the least cost as opposed to the highest value.
Well, that's why, that's why I'm actually, we should be looking for best value, not best cost. And then if you have to go back to the commission and say, look, this is the best person and this is the cost. And, you know, I mean, some guy can charge a hundred thousand a year, another guy's going to charge fifteen. Now, there's a, there's a massive difference in there, but somewhere in between, there's somebody with great value who we can afford. So and that's what you, and that's what you should be looking for and not be restricted to the fifteen, so to speak.
I, I, I agree.
And I, I, I think that's what we're sending Alan out to do. Find the best value and bring it back to the town. Work with Angus to demonstrate that value. And we will, we will fund it. Does anyone wish to share any more thoughts with Alan?
Come back and see us again and then the next budget time, come back and see us in January or February or March.
You've given me a lot of time this evening and a lot of consideration. I appreciate that and we will, we'll, we'll continue to work towards the best result here.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, what is the next item on our agenda? Is there any selectman recommendations?
Audience of citizens, anybody else in the audience?
Citizens of citizens. Do we have any citizens? We're all citizens. Do we have any miscellaneous citizens who wish to speak?
Do you want, and I, I don't know, I don't have the agenda in front of me. Do you want to catch up with Tommy too?
He's next.
Very good. Okay.
Tommy's next.
Tommy's next. Okay. And of course, Tommy.
Did we get a monthly? From him?
Kathy sent it out. Yes.
Kathy sent it, yes.
Yes, yes. All right. Tom, are you, you're not on my screen, but.
We only have a portion of his forehead.
The best part of it. That is the best part.
That's where the gray matter is.
John, you're the same.
Yeah.
Okay. Tom, you want to take it from, tell us what we've got?
There it is. Okay, just looking at the town deposits. The big thing is the general fund total at this, at this juncture right now, we have three million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand plus. I did make two transfer funds this month totaling nine hundred thousand dollars. One on June eighth for six hundred thousand, that's the, from Liberty Bank to Citizens, a general fund. Another one on six eighteen. Three hundred thousand from People's United Bank to Citizens Bank. We're phasing out that account. That's, if you look, People's United account is down to now a hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. Basically, if their rate is so low that Liberty, we're getting twice as much, more than twice as much as far as an interest rate with, with Liberty. If you look at totals from. This, this month from, from last month, we're eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars less. This, this is regarding our total, total deposits. And if you look at from last year where we were to today. We're actually seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars ahead of where we were last year. Which is, which is a good thing. So I think, you know, I think now we're going into July where the tax revenues were coming, or will be coming in. That is the big question since, you know, they can, they have ninety days to actually extension to pay taxes. So we'll see where that, where that goes. But I think right now, we're in pretty, pretty good shape. We did make one payment today. Actually, it was for our Gertland River Street sewer project expansion. Payment that was actually pre-authorized payment that came out of our Citizen Bank General Fund. It was for twenty-three thousand, ninety-nine dollars. That is for a forty year note that started in June of two thousand seventeen for six hundred and five thousand. Two and a quarter percent. So when this payment was made today, it brought our balance, balance to five hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight ninety-five, thirty-five cents. That was a principal and interest, interest payment. So that's the only payment, I mean, the only payment that we have this, this month. So it's pretty much, pretty much where we stand right now. Getting those tax revenue monies will be the, the, the big thing. It'll really, rather, we have to do that. Anticipation note with probably dime. That's up in the air right now. Because I know we had, we had talked about anticipation, anticipation notes not to exceed four million dollars.
Oh, we're going to talk about that.
Anyway, I will, I will talk about that next. But anyway, any questions for Tom? Observations?
I, I'd like to make an observation on the Memorial Fund Community Fund. This only peripherally involves the finance committee, so I'm going to be very brief. We, those are not tax dollars. Those are donated dollars. We have provided a ton of food to the food pantry. Over the last four months, I'll say. And we have gotten. A whole bunch of people and businesses to donate money back in. And it seems like that fund should be going way down, but it, but it's not. Because people have donated thousands and thousands of dollars to help us fund and keep food in the pantry. I just want to say that and it's, it's astounding. It's wonderful.
That's great.
It is. And it's also important to remember that this fund isn't used just for, just to supply the pantry, but you guys provide. Assistance with heating oil and, and other, other financial parts of. Of, of the financial distress that people might be dealing with.
Occasionally you like to talk about good news in the town. There's, we often talk about bad things. This, the fact that people are so generous is incredibly good news. Love this town for that.
Yep, it's amazing.
Excellent. So Angus, should we go into my brief presentation on the historical cash flows we've looked at all the time?
That's where you are on your agenda. You might, I think you should.
Yeah, we're, recommendations of selectmen is next.
And Angus, do you have any select, recommendations or do you recommend we look at cash flows?
Yeah, no, let's take a look at cash flows. Let's take a.
Let's see if I can bring the, now I should have the ability to bring this up.
Yes, you should.
Okay, did I do it?
No.
No.
See here, I've got the ability. I can see it. Hold on.
The old days on TV where they would put the weather map up, but there wasn't a weather map.
Uh, hold on, hold on. All right, I don't know if I can do it. I, oh, no, no, I had to do it. I know how to do it. I think I know how to do it. I go up there to share screen.
Yes.
Yes, there it is. Okay, now I've got to get back to the screen and share it. Okay, there I am. All right, I share screen. And there is my presentation and I can push a button to say share. All right, what do you think? Can we see things now?
There it goes.
Got it. All right. Now, I have sent this to the Board of Finance in an earlier version, so. There's a couple of changes I may comment on. Angus and I have gone over this. Certainly, I'm going to review the cash flow patterns, which we probably all know. But it may be important for this conversation. Angus and I had Kathy, hold on, let me push this button here. All right, all right. Angus and I had Kathy develop five years of revenue and expenses. That's what we're going to base our conversation on. I just wish to point out to you, this is an average. There's no actual budget here. So it's just an average. So I'm encouraging you to deal with things conceptually. That's big or that's small. I also wish to remind you that five years that we are looking at was a pretty good time in the economy, but. Where we have to work out is amongst ourselves is when do we get uncomfortable with the amount of cash that we have available to us, okay? Here is all those numbers that were collected for us. I shall look at, discuss each one, but look at the first three lines. First three lines are total revenues to come into the town by, by month. Second line is tax revenues and the third line is the difference. All right, now. I'm going to start with the first line, five year average total revenues, right? I think you can see the pattern that you, we know that we have. We receive cash basically, while we get it every month, we really receive our cash twice a year. In July and again in January, we'll collect property taxes, right? Now, I'm going to encourage us to focus on the tax revenue for a couple of reasons. It is the tax revenue that we gave Angus or somebody needs to help me out. We, the town provides some relief. By reducing the interest rate. I'm sure that has a better name, but, and so the, the interest lower interest rate allows them up through October. There is also this whole concept before us, what is the effect the economy is having on cash flow? So I believe we should focus on tax revenues. It is what we have the most contact with and for the first several months of the year, it funds all of our activities. So now I'm going to offer to you a couple of spots in this tax revenue. We collect on average about forty-eight percent of all of our revenues in July. By September, we collect fifty-five percent of all revenues. Now, I call, I'm calling that markers. As we go through the next couple of months, we may use those markers to indicate whether we are on budget, off budget. And by a magnitude, but that's just a thought. And just to sort of summarize, we, about seventy, eighty-four percent of all of our revenues come in through taxes. So I do believe this is the right place for us to look at. If you'll note down there, there is a difference between total revenues and total, the tax revenue. And I've got two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And there's a temptation to say this other revenue provides us some degree of cushion. I encourage you to discount that, but nevertheless. Other revenues do come in slowly, such as Incarnation Camp pays tax and, tax, gives us a, a payment in July instead of taxes. Planning, not planning, park and rec begin to collect the dollars, but I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that level. So not only am I uncomfortable, I'm going to sort of ignore it. Look at total expenses. What a surprise. Education dominates our monthly expenses. You have heard me in the past use a, a, a rule of thumb that we spend about a million and a half a month. As you can see, that's a little generous. It's just easier for me to work with million and a half than a million three. For those of you who like statistics, I have calculated a standard deviation which measures variation. We won't go into it as I do in school, but there is some variation within the, the monthly expenses, but I'm going to ignore it. And here is a pattern that I think we all know exists. We collect taxes twice a year, July and January. And I believe we spend relatively evenly throughout the year. So there is the pattern. What do you do with that pattern? You see that in July, we collect a lot of taxes. And we don't spend as mu, we spend about a million, five, seven there, and we begin to draw down on the taxes we collect. And if you see that throughout the rest of the year, we take in every, we spend every month more than we take in, giving you my red numbers. Then getting to January, we sort of replenish our cash. That is the pattern that we have lived with for, for a long time. And it has worked for us. Here's the question. Under current conditions. for a long time and it has worked for us here's the question under current conditions will that pattern hold how much change in that pattern will bring about financial stress to us and what do we perceive to be financial stress are the questions we need to focus on here's an example of a stress what uh what about in July we get ten percent lower tax collections alright now the question is does that put us into financial stress? I'm going to offer an answer yes whether it goes all the way to stress or just discomfort look at how low some of the numbers get how much cash we will have note I have stopped reducing things in September I just don't know what happens in October in October which by the way I've spelled wrong uh in October does all the taxes that didn't come in in July August September do they come back? Do they return uh us to the pattern that we have become useful to I don't know um here's an example what if ten percent is just lower taxes throughout the whole year it continues to put us in stress more stress how about that I am about to uh show you that you can have fun with math so there's ten percent reduction a twenty percent reduction we have more stress more discomfort how about a thirty percent even more look at that we run out of cash if there is a thirty percent reduction in what people pay us on some timing now with that in mind let's reach a conclusion or I'm not sure we have enough information to reach a conclusion let's call it a god judgment let's call it a guess I believe what we just looked at historical pattern and the collection of the magnitude of taxes we collect either under even under a stressful collection will get us through October we may not have much flexibility in October uh but I also remind you that we have surplus alright uh in February I told you the accountant said we had one point nine million of surplus I wrote you a note the other day that I think we'll have initial three hundred thousand dollars of surplus this year which is about three million of surplus which is ironically about the number that Tommy said we have on hand uh that will be available to us do we still wish to draw I don't know that's what we're going to talk about but there's just too much uncertainty to go for me to make any suggestions of what's gonna happen after October so conclusion um or a discussion in April we gave to Angus and Tommy the authority to do what is necessary to get us the ability to borrow up to four million dollars in a tax anticipation note Angus is working away uh Tommy named a couple banks that we are chatting about that is in place uh and what I leave with the board of finance is what do you think should be the criteria to allow uh Tommy and Angus to initiate a borrowing uh I don't have a whole lot of answers for you other than here is a proposal all by myself I made up this proposal I believe this risk is very real there is going to be some disruption to our cash flow the historical data does us no ability to measure that other towns are going to have that same uh disruption to their cash flow other towns are knocking on the doors of banks I suggest that we move immediately to get our uh our ability to borrow in place and I encourage us to think about borrowing whether we need it or not and my rationale is that is other towns ask banks to loan the money they run out of an appetite where their willingness to be exposed to Connecticut towns if we have a small borrowing in place they are uh they are partners with us they will work with us there is a concept and we looked at this in August uh I give you a couple markers we will have a better information week but better on how what is the effect of the virus on our tax uh uh cash collections now Angus and I have had about three conversations today on what next uh I'm going to let Angus take over Angus what do you think we should be doing from next point on?
Well um I would right now we don't have the ability to have a town meeting where we can have a vote and we don't need to right now I don't think we need to have a town meeting until towards the end of July and and I do think that something like this should be voted on by the community and that's it's it's the government that we have that's how we work so my my thinking is that we will uh we will pay attention as much as we always pay attention and probably a little bit more to the the where our tax revenues are at the end of July at our at your next July meeting we will have um better and more information we'll be able to say hey we're we're going if we need to we see a total collapse in in tax collection and then we can address that or we can we can go to a town meeting at the same night as our next as our last as our next meeting you know I think that we will be able to gather in a upstairs and I think capacity there if we're able to bring a hundred people into a room I think that that satisfies the need for a town meeting um in 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 person town meeting we certainly can have a town meeting remotely but we can't vote remotely and that's where it comes down to so my my suggestion is that we delay any action through uh through the next month unless unless we find something that's absolutely necessary but the next step is in my mind is a town meeting to bring to have a resolution put to the town to vote and authorize this borrow the board of selectmen and the board of finance have already authorized the um authorized moving forward and are making the arrangements for this borrow we our next step is to 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 allow for the town to have at least a public comment and and my hope is a public vote in 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 the end of July.
So we we cannot right at this point borrow any money without permission from the town am I correct?
Um at this point we could we can borrow money uh with the board of selectmen's decision to do so I prefer to to wait until uh until we have at least a better chance of having a town vote.
So at the end of July we we should know this pretty much where we're gonna stand people are gonna pay or not pay.
Right.
You know that's that's the question really uh I I think and Bud may have the numbers up there but we 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 will get forty percent of of our taxes or what did you say forty?
Forty eight percent forty eight percent in July fifty five by September.
Now if and this is where it gets a little goofy we can we can count on forty percent of that forty eight percent because that comes from banks in Espro so you know we know we're gonna get some money we just don't know how much how much are we gonna get hit? and and this tax relief runs through October so if I was if I was inclined to take that I would I would write it through through our through the length of time that I can
Right.
So that's where we start to see we're gonna see that some of this stress I'm certainly already feeling discomfort but the town will will see some stress when we get to September and we have and we've only received fifty percent of of what we normally do
Well, we can make a move in July and August without we could just say hey this isn't working.
That's the point I don't I think that the town needs to understand that if we wait to go to for authorization to borrow until we need to borrow we will be too late I think we need to take in July we need to go to a meeting and say look at this is where we are this is where we're trending we need to we we should put ourselves in a position so we can uh borrow this money and be in a position to to pay our obligations we're not taking on any additional obligations which is just to pay the obligations that we already have in place and uh I I think it's prudent for us to at least go to the town and and ask for that.
Okay, well, what it costs us to borrow this five hundred thousand dollars in order to kind of lock us into a bank so to speak?
I don't know I have to I it would cost us the same you know I I need to I need I expect to be had I hope to hear back from uh dime bank today uh I expect to hear back from tomorrow they're usually very quick to respond and I can ask those questions this was explained to me that we do not need to borrow four million dollars we can borrow it as we need it and and that that five hundred thousand might come in I don't know what the cost will be if we have to have a closing cost every time if we borrow five hundred thousand now we pay a closing cost then we find we need another million should we have an incur other expenses?
Yes, that's a good point.
I assume that we do but I don't know that.
Um I've got a couple concerns one there's a whole new round of of furloughs going on right now effective this week my son got furloughed this week so and he's in a law firm um there's also come September end of August September we've got a lot of parents that are expecting kids are gonna go back to school I mean the discussions are the schools maybe open this day or you may be doing remote teaching this week and not next week parents can't find daycare to cover them at that so there's gonna be more unemployment at that point is my thought um and really we gave the selectmen the authority to go for it I am very much afraid that we won't be you know hey it's a small town we're not asking for a lot um you can do without it we need to get this in place now um we were we have the authority to do it now this has been discussed last month at the public meeting um so this is not a new thing that we're throwing out there I really think we should just go for that open the line of credit or whatever they wanna call it um up to that four million take that first installment or just have it open so that we can receive it as we need it.
Cause you're gonna pay you're gonna be paying on what you uh use so if you have four million dollar line uh you only use you know five uh you know
You're only gonna pay the yeah the interest I mean you're gonna pay the legal fees but the interest will be yeah.
Gives you the option if you need that additional uh money it's there so that that makes sense.
Yep.
But you don't pay in the four million dot you don't pay in the four million dollar line.
You're given the line of four million but it's gonna be based on what you use.
Right, right, okay.
That's right and and remember this needs to be paid back in the same fiscal year that it's borrowed.
Correct.
So the rate the rate of interest doesn't change if you're only going to borrow five hundred thousand dollars?
No, no, the rate should be the same.
The rate will only change if for some reason we can't pay it back and have to reborrow.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
God forbid but in reality and we visited this before at some length when we talked about it no matter how much you borrow it it's not at a great rate and hopefully we're only borrowing it for a few months or six months we're not borrowing it for twenty years or something so the amount of the amount of um interest that you pay back is is thousands of dollars it's a few thousand it's several thousand we're not talking about you know hundred and fifty thousand we're talking you know a few thousand dollars it's not enough that's gonna break the town not the not the interest as long as you borrow and then you pay it back because the taxes have been paid you're okay.
Yep.
That's a big if.
I know I know but I'm just saying that's the way it's it's supposed to work.
Mm-hmm. Cause they have
Go ahead come on sorry.
They can delay their tax payments until what October only have to pay what's the interest that they would be taxed one point something percent?
It's a three percent
It's three percent I thought.
Three percent annually it comes down to um two point or point two five two point five percent I think.
Pay it back by that time then it reverses to the normal interest.
Then it goes back if they don't pay October if they wait until October
Second.
Yeah make their payment um all of that interest goes right back up to the normal eight percent.
You know I think July is gonna tell the story it's gonna I I think we're gonna see you know
It absolutely will.
Yeah, yeah, July is gonna tell the story.
Yeah.
So why can't we wait until July then?
That's what we're
That's what we're that's what we're that's what I'm that's what I'm
Because you wanna you wanna make a relationship with a bank potentially because the other hundred and fifty six towns in Connecticut however many
Are also waiting for July.
If you're also waiting just like we are.
Bank are they? They're not all going to the same bank.
You would imagine not but there are not not all banks will um will handle tax anticipation notes.
If the bank if the bank interest comes in light you'll know if the taxpayers are in trouble on their mortgages too correct you know so you'll have a sense you'd be able to see there if you're
You know that's an interesting I I don't know that this is an accurate response but I believe it is I think that a lot of banks have in fact given people um a month or two where they they didn't need to pay their mo- their mortgage they did need to pay their escrow.
Oh, they had to pay their escrow right so so then if they yeah alright so they might
But they did not hold back on the escrow that money.
Well, if they if if they didn't pay their escrow then they're really in trouble.
That's right, yeah.
And foreclosures will be starting up again at this point probably in in September October.
Right now I don't believe foreclosures are allowed by the federal law.
They're not, they're not so they won't be starting up again and then there's gonna be a bunch.
There's there's an awful lot of speculation but we just don't know what's going to happen uh
Yeah.
And that's and that's the reason that I believe um and I think that Bud and I are of the same mind and I think the majority of this group is and the unknowns in this particular situation create enough discomfort to where we need to prepare for the worst so that we can continue to meet our obligations.
Here's 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 what I think first of all if you're a betting person then that's fine I I'm a very conservative person and my home finances and 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 I would like to thank the deep rivers finances I would go and get some money right now I don't think five hundred thousand is enough that's just my personal opinion because as Bud pointed out on average we spend one million at a minimum at one point five one point seven on a monthly basis you're gonna go get some money go get some money have it ready to go if you don't need it no problem if you do need it then you have it I wouldn't wait.
I agree with that.
I agree.
We make a motion on that?
We can but it won't carry any water we I I know I hear you I'm sure that Dwayne and Jim are listening and hear the same thing
Right.
Uh we will have to call a special meeting in order to do that um and I I still I I agree with you in principle um but I still uh would like very much to try and uh arrange for a town vote on this so we'll see where we get to I'll I'll speak with I'll speak with bond counsel I'll speak with our county attorney uh tomorrow and and ensure that we can in fact move forward I will be speaking with dime bank tomorrow so we'll see with that and I I I would like to make another call I think I'd like to talk with Tom about if he has a suggestion for another bank to speak to as well.
Yeah, when I say borrow I don't take that lightly it's not a willy nilly I I say it to protect the town and to protect so that our we can pay our employees that we can continue to do all those things we we do it's important to that continuation is important.
Well, that's that's why we're having this conversation right now.
We're we're gonna have money through July regardless because of escrows and so on.
Yep.
So if we can't borrow until June and that I that hopefully that won't be too late we can still do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
If the banks are still willing to lend.
If the banks are still willing to lend.
Right, which is why I'm not in favor of waiting.
Well, I I I mentioned at the um at the selectmen's meeting I've got calls in to to both uh the Connecticut council municipalities as well as to the OPM to ensure that um that we do have the ability to do this and what the process the exact process will do.
When think if the state has mandated this waiting period that people can have you would know they could also make sure that the banks could do what they need to do I but I don't know that I'm just saying in a very nice world that would happen.
The state can do an awful lot but they can't make money.
Yeah, I know.
They seem to think that you can't get.
He sure can spend it.
It's on trees, doesn't it?
Uh, all right, so what have we said? Angus and uh, is going to go out and uh, and Tommy are going to uh, get this thing in place soon, pick a bank. We will keep you informed of that status. We'll keep our eye on July taxes. You know, I think the first time we're gonna get a real, while week, a good measurement is at the end of July, but uh, if uh, if there's anything major, we'll get, we'll call a special meeting.
Yeah.
Pay your taxes.
Pay your taxes. Pay your taxes.
Pay your taxes, that's right.
Taxes, that is exactly, so, all right.
I suspect by the time of our next meeting, we'll know pretty much where we are and what's happening.
I think that's, I think that's true.
I think that is true. Um, don't, um, good, good, good. Let's uh, let us move on. The um, the thing that, the the big item that remains is looking at the most recent um, financial statements. Does, Laurie and I went over them today. Does uh, anyone have anything? Laurie, do you have them up or?
Um, I'm trying to find Kathy's email. I, I keep, I keep losing it. It never comes to my inbox. All right, hold on, let me just see if I can pull it up again.
I assume that is no statement of what you perceive them to be worth.
No, it's just this stupid computer, sorry, and Hotmail or whatever it is, I mean, she sends it to. Okay, let me see. I think I need to tell her to send it to, no, that's the wrong one. I think I said I need to tell her to send it to my other account.
Now, the, these financial statements are dated June eighteenth. I'm going to suggest to you there's still expenditures left. And um, there's at least one, there's gotta be a, one payroll left to the way I'm looking at some of these numbers.
Okay, hold on, I gotta go.
Yes, there is one more payroll.
Correct.
And and actually, this is a goofy year because the next payroll, next paycheck that is distributed is actually distributed in July, but the majority of that pay period is in uh, June.
June. Well, that's interesting. The budget won't re, the budget won't reflect it or reflect it next year's uh, expense.
That happened a few years ago, if you remember.
That's right. Our accounting statements will address it, but not these, okay?
That's right.
All right, cool.
Okay, wait a minute, I'm trying to find my email.
Can I forward it to you? I have it right here.
Yeah. May have to. Oh, you gotta be kidding me.
No, I have it right here, really.
I know, but I, it's, this computer is so much, there it is.
Yeah.
Why did it do that? Okay. Revenues, I'm trying to find her expenses.
Um, while you're looking, um, I, again, I sent Angus and I went through this uh, maybe a week or so ago and estimated year-end expenditures, and it's based on that that I gave you my estimate of about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars surplus we should experience this year. A large portion of that comes once again from uh, very good revenues that we're seeing, about two hundred and fifty thousand of it is revenue. So uh, I think that is good news. We're not there yet, but uh, I think that is certainly good news. If you look at this budget, you will note that most, what should we call them, categories, selectmen, elections, town hall have a surplus that we are ending the year at.
When you say collections are are up two fifty, meaning up and above what we budgeted, is that correct?
You got it, yes, that is exactly what I mean. Yes, that's correct.
Just wanna clarify that for the folks at home.
Okay, town hall operations, the telephone is over. Did we change services or is that because of Zoom meetings?
Um, that's, that's, that's Zoom meetings. We've, all of our, all of our commissions are running off of that, yeah. And there are bills, there are bills like that that will be reimbursed. From FEMA, or certainly will be requested to be reimbursed from FEMA. Everything that is COVID-related, um, eighty percent of the cost of anything COVID-related that was not previously budgeted for will be uh, will be uh, reimbursed by FEMA.
Wow.
But no.
Uh, so custodial supplies being over, that's gonna be submitted.
That's, 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 yep.
While you're on town hall operations, look, I just want you to look at the positive side. Look at those first couple of numbers. I mean, we've got thirty-five thousand dollars of fuel, water, four thousand dollars, electricity. I mean, it's just, it's amazing how the savings in that account.
I think that's a real good, that's a great combination of the energy efficiency work that we've done.
Oh, yeah, very good, very, very good.
With, it was a really mild year.
Yeah, very good, that is. We have worked on that with our, very good. Uh, now Angus, there is still twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars left in um, buildings. Our conversation is you intend to use all that by the end of the year, right?
My intent is to use it all by the end of the year. I'm not sure we're going to be, we're going to make it.
Okay.
But um.
Well, this in some sense gets into our new term encumbrance. Um, it'd be nice to use it, but it's a lot of money, good, and a lot of need.
Yes.
All right.
You know, the library, I have a, you know, I have a um, structural engineer coming in to look at that library, if you remember. I don't think that we're gonna have to spend a whole lot of money. I don't think it's structural, but I'm gonna have an engineer confirm that.
For those of us who live in old houses, bricks and basements do begin to deteriorate. Um, Laurie, you have more questions? I was going to, let's continue down the line.
Really, old houses don't have basements, forget about it.
Yeah, dirt.
I got these big old stones down there, man. I've got cement that's a couple hundred years old. I imagine that's really sturdy.
Oh, yeah, I just have ledge. Um, we've got some salary that's over.
Yes, we do.
Assistant salary, how is that? Oh, I mean, we didn't authorize anybody to expend their salary.
Where, where are you? And I will.
I'm sorry, town clerk, page one, bottom of it.
Yeah, that is um, that, that is pure blunder on on both. Well, actually, there's two things combined. Um, the assistant has been working more hours because Amy has not been in the office. She's been working remotely. Um, and I had a very um, strong interest in ensuring that that office was manned. That said, there was a miscommunication. And I'm not casting any blame and I'm not taking any responsibility. Last year when Amy uh, redid her uh, software, she saved, she saved about five or six thousand dollars a year. She made the assumption, and she and I had a long conversation about this last Friday, about um, that she just assumed that that savings would be passed on to ours. It was not, it was not a, it was not a good assumption. I didn't see it in the hours um, until just recently, and that's why we had the conversation.
Seems to be the theme of the night.
I was thinking there, there's a theme here, isn't there? I guess, I guess Jimmy Budney's giving accounting lessons to the town, so yes.
Yeah, no.
No, that was, that was a bad, that was, I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna pass any judgment on it, but it was a bad, bad decision.
Yeah, I mean, any assumed savings, all departments, I mean, this is not something new. We've always said you stay within your line and that line is all you can spend it on is that's the word right of it. There's no exception.
No, I understand, and and that's, that's the conversation that we had. But, you know, it's spent.
Okay, cause we didn't authorize any additional hours. I mean, maybe you have in this.
That's where, no, I did not authorize additional hours. I I just wanted to ensure that she, that the office was open. She um, she is authorized to work twenty-two hours a week. Amy, at some point, authorized her to work twenty-four hours a week. And that was without conversation, that was just based on an assumption. And uh, and it did not, it went unnoticed by me until this budget, uh, these reports came in a little while ago.
Okay, now is there gonna, since she's worked more hours, the other one has not been in the office, is there a trade-off?
No, there isn't. The other one is a salariedelictive for the year salary.
That's, that's salaried, sorry, okay.
Well, it's a good.
You know, these, uh, I'm not excusing anything, but in these extraordinary times, COVID screws things up.
Yep.
Some of this stuff.
Correct.
Yeah, it did.
Okay, um, same thing with pa- uh, page two, assessor's salary is over.
Yes.
Significant over.
That. Um, that, that is a direct, direct result of uh, well, I'm trying to think of the best way to say it. I actually just learned that um, today. And that I think has more to do with the fact that she's been uh, taking vacation in time that uh, had been accrued. Uh, over time. So she, she's been taking that money, basically that money, but she's been taking vacation days um, that she's, you know, remember the thing with Ray, we had a, he had accrued so many hours. Um, after that, we put a statement out to all of the towns, town employees that that was not what they were supposed to be doing. They're not allowed to do that. Um, you can't take them away, but we, we're certainly not gonna allow them to accrue hours as they were. What was told to me today, when I saw this, when I was looking at it, was that she's been taking vacation days beyond what she has.
No.
She's using her accrued time. I understand it. I just learned about it today from Kathy. Uh, we're gonna be talking about it. It, it, it has to do with, it's not a COVID-related thing, it's, it's something related to the, just your vacation time. And she's been taking that time. It's not budgeted for, I need to talk to her about it. She didn't understand it. But that's, that's what, that's what the reason for that is.
But you don't, you don't get paid for both.
I, I understand, uh, but she's used up, she's used up vacation time that she has for this year. Now, any additional vacation time is coming out of accrued, it's not budgeted for. It's, it's passive, you know, in the end, like when, when Ray just retired, we had to go back and say, okay, here's what we owe him.
Doesn't that have to, doesn't she have to run that by approval at some level? She can just take time however she wants?
She certainly should have, and that's the conversation we'll have. I just, I learned this this afternoon, uh, but when I was reviewing this for tonight's meeting. We will have that conversation. Yes, she does need to do that. But the other end of this is that, if you look historically, that line has gone over, and I don't know why. But that line has gone over um, for the last three years. Not as much as it is right now, but it has gone over. We'll try to figure out what can get to the bottom of that.
So Angus, a more general question for folks that do have all the accrued vacation time.
Yep.
Are there gonna be like general rules in place as to how and when they can take it?
There already, there already are rules in place.
Yep.
Um, and yes, the attorney right now is working out the statement for, for folks, um, because I I issued a statement uh, three or four months ago. You cannot approve vacation. It's just clear, you can't do it. You take it or you lose it. But COVID nineteen has eliminated a lot of people's ability to take vacations. So three months after I made that statement, I'm working on another statement that says because of the situation, we will allow you to approve it, this vacation, but it needs to be used within the next year.
Okay.
Fiscal year.
All right.
Yeah.
That's fine, just, I was just making sure it's not like willy-nilly, that people just do whatever with their accrued vacation.
No, and they need to, they, what's, you know, I don't wanna throw anybody under a bus on a, on a public meeting, but you, you need to talk, you're supposed to say, hey, two weeks' notice, this is a vacation. Take a day and say that, I'm taking a vacation.
Okay. So this is more of an anomaly, it's not just something natural.
I sure hope so.
Yeah.
That's scary.
Shall we wander our way down? Laurie, you wanna, I was gonna stop at planning and zoning just because we've stopped there already. Do you have any other questions on the way, anyone?
Um, I'm trying to find.
Planning and zoning is, there's this forty thousand dollars that he says is a, is a surplus. Uh, in, but the uncomfortable, and I, I think we are kind with that phrase, we didn't, I think Angus took him on, but that's your entire budget. You just can't take your entire budget and shove it up in salaries and uh, and uh, and so, but but it is a good number. I think we're in the right direction with those folks, but I just thought I'd stop for a moment. And there's the nineteen that you can see. We budgeted for Kathy at thirty-three, and we spent thirteen, Russ's, the numbers that you were having troubles with. And we spent thirteen on the, the woman that was there, and it gave us nineteen, almost twenty left over.
And I see the tech, part-time clerical, is that over because of filling an extra time while people are out?
No, I have no idea why that's over. Nancy is certainly not working more hours. I'm gonna guess that that's bad, that's just bad account.
Okay.
I'll ask about that.
I didn't notice that one. Yeah, Nancy's not working more, cool. Um, okay, keep on going down, and just to keep the theme going. Uh, we've got our building inspector who's uh, over salary-wise as well, but good luck on controlling him.
Now, is he over because of reopenings?
He is over, that is a portion of that, absolutely. He, he worked an awful lot of hours um, recently. He was very close to being over last month. Um, and the COVID, COVID did push him over.
So has he done most of the inspections for the restaurants and the COVID?
He's done all, he's done all of the inspections. Uh, zoning enforcement officer has to do them as well, as well as fire marshal and the health department.
Okay, all right.
Um, but um, some of that salary, I'm hopeful uh, will, will fall into that reimbursement.
Oh, that's interesting. Wow, very good. Okay. Uh, all right, I'm going to uh, uh, go, I, I, I'm, I'm gonna go down just because we've had conversations. I don't think there's much more. Look at medical insurance, which we certainly spent a lot of time talking about this year.
Okay, hold on, go back one, inland, wetland, also part-time clerical, she's over.
The same person, so I, I would.
Yeah, so we gotta get that one.
Very good, very good, I didn't catch that one. I assume these are final numbers too. Um, and again, I, I'll go down to uh, medical insurance. We budgeted three hundred and fifty-four point seven. There's still thirty-eight thousand dollars. Angus, do you have, do we have another payment? That's a premium. Do we have another payment or is that surplus we will have?
My understanding is that's got, our last payment went out at the beginning of this month. Um, so.
So it went out the beginning of the month, it would be on, that's a surplus?
We paid June, in the beginning of June.
Okay.
So, and we're, and we're starting with the new firm in uh, in July, but I think you're gonna see Bud that there will be some surplus, but not this much.
Okay.
Um, because we still have to pay, we pay in advance, so we'll pay July's payment.
Oh, okay, okay, so that could actually be July.
For just a minute here before we go through any more of the budget, just a question, information for me. All the surpluses that are coming up in people's budgets.
Yes.
Do, do those commissions or boards or whatever they are make unilateral decisions on how to use their surplus, or do they have to go through the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance?
Have to go through the Board of Finance, although you've heard people who try, but they have to go through the Board of Finance. And this was Russ's point uh, to Alan. When you have a surplus that goes into this general surplus to the Board of Finance. Yes, ask the question, I apologize.
Okay.
Although we have people who get creative, but yes, that is the way it's supposed to work.
So you were discussing employee, was that salad, salary contingency accrued benefits, which is over so much?
It shouldn't be over. If you remember in our, I don't know, June meeting or uh, April meeting, we adjusted that budget line to reflect a payment we were going to make, the first payment we were gonna make to Ray. The budget number is not correct.
Okay.
I'll have to remember to point that out to Kathy. And there is police protection. While the number at the bottom would indicate that we are over on police, we're always over because of the way we uh, we address special police. Uh, I think we're right on. If you note that the resident trooper, as Angus was suggesting, we overbudgeted. There is about what, forty-eight, almost forty-nine thousand dollars uh, for the resident trooper, much of which we use to fund the uh, the new policemen we have. So I think we are we are as anticipated. We will see a surplus in there if you disregard the special funding.
Yeah, we, you know, that, to say that we overbudgeted is, is a little bit misleading because um, we budgeted based on what the state told us it was going to. we budgeted based on what the state told us it was going to cost.
Ah.
Right.
Oh, so the.
And then she retired, and then the new one came in at a lower amount, so they didn't need to bill us as what they said they were going to.
Right.
So.
Is that true? I thought that the state said we were going to bill you at a hundred and five percent and only charge just something less than that.
They charged, they ended up, that, that's correct. They, there's two, two factors. They told us to budget for a hundred and, a hundred and seven percent, I think. Um, and they ended up charging us eighty five percent.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so.
But Tom is also not as high on the salary.
Ah, okay, okay. All right, very good. Two-pronged answer. Good. Uh, fire department, um, I don't know if you want to, the vehicle maintenance, they have been over in their vehicle maintenance for a couple of months, so that's no surprise to us. Um, but notice they have, they, they still, I have a surplus. I'm expecting a surplus. You never can tell with those folks.
Well, the water hole maintenance is being spent, as we speak, might have been spent already.
And I think when you went up, yeah.
On water hole maintenance.
Maintenance, yeah.
Oh, they're actually doing that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, you know, it's funny, because I reprimanded, uh, Jimmy about that, uh, a month or so ago. He said, oh, we always do that. We, we don't, we save it up for two years and then we do it.
No.
Jimmy.
All right.
No.
All right, um, and, and I'm just gonna grab a couple. Civil preparedness is over by ninety eight dollars, which is fine with me. It's just, it's such a small number, and we rather, actually never even spend it, but I assume that is COVID related.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Um, take us through a brief final discussion of the highway department. Uh, I assume that they're gonna spend most of their dollars. Do you think, certainly highway and that type of thing is?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, highway, um, the highway, I was explaining to, uh, the board of selectmen earlier, we're gonna try, it's not experimental, but it's new to us. Uh, pavement rejuvenation, um, as opposed to regaining, we'll take, we're gonna take roads, some, like a road like Kelsey Hill. We're gonna do some, it's not in good, it's not in bad shape, um, but there are a couple of areas that need to be patched, so we're gonna put those patches on it. Then we're gonna put, um, this rejuvenator oil on the top of it. Um, that, that soaks into the pavement, softens it up a little bit. And then, um, and then a month later, we're gonna go back and put a seal the cracks and things like that. Now, that is supposed to add, you know, they're advertising this and, and the recommendations and the people that I've spoken with say that adds about five, seven years to the life of the road. It adds a little bit more if, if three years later you go back and you chip seal the road. So I think, um, my plan anyway, my hope is that we can utilize this kind of a treatment to extend the life of our roads, um, where we don't, you know, we're not, we're not having to tear them out as, as frequently.
Kelsey Hill would be a good test for that with all the buses.
Well, that's the idea. Kelsey Hill. And it is in reasonably good shape for a road that's aged and the amount of use that it gets.
I'll be, trust me, I'll be the first to complain about it.
That's one of the reasons we chose that road, Bill.
Yeah.
Speaking of roads, by, uh, P, by mailbox number one ten on River Road, I hit a pothole about two inches deep, couple feet by, you know, wide. If I hit that on my motorcycle and I go down, guess who I'm coming after? It, that has to be fixed. There's a number of nasty areas beef coming to Main Street on River Road, and specifically, there's one right around one ten that is a wheel eater.
I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, why isn't our, our highway department supervisor traveling the roads on a regular basis to see what needs to be done? Because these potholes are not new.
He is.
How's he missed them?
I don't know.
He needs his glasses checked.
He squirts around them.
He's, yeah, swerving around them, because I'm certainly hitting them. If I, if I hit him at night.
I think that hole might be a sinkhole, Laurie. It keeps, it just seems to be there all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I, I haven't, I'm not aware of that one, but if it's the area that, that, that Carmella's speaking about, it, it, it is something besides a pothole, but we have, we have been out there, um, in the last two months.
Been filled a lot.
There were some, and then they, they, they've patched a couple areas, and then they missed a bunch of areas that really needed it, and then they went and patched some beyond that. Um, when, when you're riding a, a recumbent bicycle that your butt's about an inch off the ground, you see these things and you feel them. Um, so they, they've patched some, they skipped a few, then they patched some more up the road a little bit further. So. They gotta look better.
I've already noted it, and we'll, we'll go on and look at it tomorrow.
Sorry.
That's okay. And Angus and I, when we went over, we, we assumed the highway department is virtually going to come in. I mean, I think it didn't see, we saved some dollars, so that hundred and seven will disappear on us.
Sand and salt will, will save, um.
Yeah. Sand and salt we got there, and that, we said we would, I forget how much you had me keep of the storm, the contingency, but, uh,
Yeah.
uh, they'll come in mostly. They'll spend all that money. All right, um, keep on going down. Anything, uh, anybody else got, anything else, Laurie, that you wish to chat about? If, uh?
I'm looking down further. Is our social services, is she having to put in more hours, or is she doing okay?
She's doing okay.
I think she put more in with, uh, COVID. Good, okay.
Okay. P and Z, uh, park and rec, wrong letters. Um, they're not, they've got a bit out, they're way over in their self-funding, so something's wrong there. Um, I know typically they would make money in, but a lot of programs have been canceled, and if you buy a ticket, I know for tickets that I've purchased, they said, well, this date, we're not gonna be here, but he's gonna be here another day, so your tickets will be valid then.
Did, uh, I know, I thought that, um, Carol sent an email to you all. I, I know, I know at least Bud, and I thought you were copied on it, um.
She sent it to me, and I did not send it around. I can send it around.
They spent a lot of money on, uh, tickets for ballgames, tickets for Broadway shows, uh, a lot of that stuff. Only portions of that have been refunded thus far. Bus trips, things like that.
I will send that around.
The example that comes to mind is the Red Sox refunded July. It did not refund August, September, uh, yet. Yankees haven't given them any money back yet.
They probably think they're gonna play then.
They're hopeful, yeah.
Even if they play, I don't think they're, they're not gonna let anybody in the stands, so.
They just struck some agreement today, I think.
Right, but their self-funding program, I mean, they're, they were only authorized to spend thirty five, and they've spent fifty three?
I don't know. I will look into that.
So that's way over.
It always, it always goes over, but if you look at, at the, um.
Usually get revenues to compensate it, yeah.
Revenues, it always goes way over too. That's one, it's one of those lines that is always all the time.
Yeah.
And as Bud said, we also, camps is part of that, and camps are, um, just starting up, and they're starting up at a limited numbers, so.
Um, I'm going. I'm gonna take us down to a general government capital, um, and if you look there at the fire department, we budgeted thirty five. They spent two thousand six, but Angus gives me the assurance, is that their, is that their washing machines?
Yes, that's the washer and dryer.
Okay, and it is on order or something like that will be spent?
Yeah, no, that's been ordered.
I'm surprised.
As far as I know.
Yeah, um, and a revow, we budgeted, remember we changed that to sixty, and there's still twelve left, but, uh, uh, that may require some encumbrances or some, but that'll be spent. And Angus, why don't you take a comment on your architectural services? We built, we budgeted twenty, spent three seven, but you intend to pay that architect soon, don't you?
Yes, I don't know, I don't know that we're gonna get, I don't, I'm, I'm confident we're not gonna get to all of that. Um, but they, they've been, I think Jim could probably speak to how active they have not been over the last few months, uh, just basically because of COVID. They, they have not been meeting.
Right.
Ah, okay. Does that?
I had, I had hoped at this point, I had hoped that at this point we'd be engineering the project, um, but, uh, we are not right now.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good point.
A lot of the training they do can't be done by a Zoom meeting.
Okay. Ah, that's right. We had talked about that, uh, that going to referendum sometime in September, but we're not, uh, that's gonna be pushed back, yeah.
It's gonna have to be pushed back. We just don't have the chance for it.
Okay.
I spoke with Tim about that briefly today.
All right. I believe that brings us to the end of our, uh, our expenditures, unless anyone else has any questions. Uh, uh, again, I asked you to, uh, look at all the surpluses that we have, and I think we will do fairly well this year for the, that, uh, as a surplus, which I think we.
Yeah, I think, um.
Which I think we may need.
I think you're right. You know, if my recollection is correct, Bud, when we, when you and I went over this last, we determined that we were actually very close to our expenditures, um.
Yes.
Our revenues were.
And the revenues are what sort of drives us up, which is good. Uh, but I remind you that in the budget, we said we were gonna take part of our surplus and use it to fund next year's budget. So, and then we've got this mystery that we're looking at, so, uh, thank God, thank God we have surplus, I guess is, uh, what we can say. All right.
Yeah, we have a fire truck. We've got Z E O. We've got troopers. We've got some expenses that are going to be added into next year. Um, it's gotta pursue these things.
That is correct.
You will see some additional monies coming back from the schools as well.
That's correct.
Yeah, but they're adding, they're, they decided at their last meeting, I sent some notes out, they're pursuing things that are on their capital plans, um, capital project plans, that they're pursuing them now because they have so much surplus. And they're still gonna be able to give back a huge, quote, a huge amount to the towns and reimburse significantly into their health insurance. I, I sent as what I could, the notes from that meeting. I was just floored. That there, you know, for instance, at John Winthrop, they've got a security, double door security, so that somebody walks in, they's red flagged, and they can lock him into that between the double doors. They have a person volunteering who's a civil engineer. What type of civil engineer? I don't know. Is she road? Is she soil? That's planning on overseeing those plans, from my understanding. She's not qualified to do that. She's not. She's not structural. She's not.
Laurie, she's very qualified. She was the project manager on Olheim High School re, redevelopment a few years ago. She, she is a very qualified person in that field.
Certified engineer for structural, civil, H V A C. I mean, there's architecture, a lot of different parts.
If you're a project manager around a big school project, like Olheim did, he did a very good job over there, so I, I dealt with her on a professional side.
Okay. All right, but they also.
I feel comfortable.
Okay, they also said they were gonna be putting in for the architectural and the planning on that more than they had already approved. They approved fif, we approved fifty thou, they approved fifty thousand for the project. Now they're spending more than that on just the development of the project. So, I mean, that's just one of the things that they authorized at their last meeting.
Um, I, I think we need to accept there's certain things we cannot control in life, um.
Yeah.
Um, I assume Angus, I assume we received the fourteen thousand three hundred from the school this week, sometime?
I have not seen it, but I'm, I haven't seen it, but I'm sure it's coming.
Which means that the surplus that they are generating in this budget year, we will not see for two years? The surplus we're getting back is two years old. They have to wait for their audit, I assume, to return it.
I would guess that that's the case, but I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
I do not either, so. They are a mysterious group up there, so. Uh, all right, folks, um, does anyone have any other business they would like to discuss? Hearing none.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
You're sitting in the dark.
The buds, the buds are biting them.
Second, I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We will talk soon, guys.
All right, bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.
Have a good one.